Five thirty, we'll call this meeting to order, the inverse school board tonight, June eighteenth, our final scheduled meeting, I don't see anything popping up in the schedule till now, in the final twelve days of the fiscal year. Our final meeting of this fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Four of us are present tonight, Terry Beam is on her way, so she will be here when work duties are finished, so. Uh, with the call to order, I do want to, before we get into the rest of the agenda, just make a couple of recognitions tonight, we have more than usual. On the dot, we'll start off with Christine Landwell, she's not able to join us tonight because she's actually getting ready for her final twelve days. With SEU thirty-nine, she will start a new position after about a dozen years at Amherst or Amherst South Egan. She'll be the new superintendent of the Chester School District, so we're very grateful for the work that she's put in here for over a decade and wish her the best of luck as she moves on to that new position in state, so I'm sure that we'll I will see her quite a bit, I'm sure that Mike and Steve will certainly keep in touch with her as she gets started uh, on that new adventure. We want to recognize, uh, Olm Frudal for another strong finish, spelling wise, he finished, it made it to the fifth round of the National Spelling Bee Championship. Greg and I were talking that he was knocked out on a grammar definition, so I'm not really sure where that factors into the spelling piece of it, but congratulations to him, and certainly representing Amherst, the town well, and uh, we wish him luck as he goes on to South Egan next year. Uh, it is a new fiscal year for us starting soon, so it is only appropriate that we recognize all the students that will be making big transitions coming up over the next couple of months. A long list of them, fourth graders, who will become our newest middle schoolers here at AMS. Our sixth graders that we'll see for the first time, and seventh graders as they come down the hill from Mount Vernon. Eighth graders heading off to high school, but good luck to them as they begin their, uh, South Egan careers, or whatever high school option they're pursuing. And then, of course, the, the big graduation, the one that, uh, impacts a lot of parents in this town, the ones where the kids will be going off to their next academic adventures. Or real life adventures, be it military, or some sort of academic pursuit, or trade pursuit, all the kids who graduated from South Egan last week, so a lot of transitions, a lot of big moments for a lot of families here in town, and uh, congratulations to the families, and congratulations to those students, and we'll look forward to seeing big things from them, or just seeing them, uh, in the hallways of the new building, uh, coming months here in September when we start school again. With that, Steve, we have anybody on Zoom tonight?
We have one person in attendance.
One person in attendance, uh, is there a hand raised for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll open public comment, there's nobody here in the building tonight, so we'll give it a moment for that person online to raise their hand if they choose. Uh, you'll have three minutes to speak, if you would like to come on and address the board tonight for public comment, we'll have one more session at the end of the meeting, per usual tonight. Seeing nothing with that yet, seeing nobody in attendance, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. As we roll along tonight, a lot of big things that are backloaded in the meeting, so being able to go through some of these early items is never a bad thing. We'll do the consent agenda, which I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as was presented tonight. Very short one tonight, which is a rarity. Thank Jason, can I get a second? Second, are there any questions for Mike, or Steve, or Amy on the consent agenda as it's being presented? Okay, seeing none, I will call a vote to approve consent agenda. All in favor? It's four of us, and that would pass with Terry not being present as of yet. Sorry, my agenda closed, so I'm destroying five, the, uh, the items as we get to it, so. Uh, next item will be our reports, uh, one item to note, we did have a nutrition report. Fund balance of about twelve thousand dollars for a surplus, so it does not look like prices need to increase. I know Amy, when we looked at this maybe three or four months ago, the fund balance was, say somewhere around two thirty and forty thousand, significantly larger. Is there a reason why, uh, why it decreased, was it a cost of goods thing, was it just a participation thing? These are recent.
Yeah, I would have to look at where we, like, uh, we were at with that projection. See what kind of changed.
I have all the desperate and sending that earlier, I just, I just thought of that now as I was going through the.
Yeah, I, if you during the meeting, I'll definitely do a little.
Anybody else have questions on the, uh, on the reports that we saw from Mike?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question, but just something as we get into, and I think there's a couple of things in the principal reports to point out as we get into the goals conversation, silly's conversation. Um, so in part of broken time, there's talk of building a curriculum and changing curriculum. Give you a review, the, I don't know if this is appropriate time to mention it, but we can talk about tools. Time, but what data points are we using?
In regards to academic performance?
It's in terms of measurement, yeah, right, so if we're doing literacy curriculum, totally sported, totally unworn, we, what are we using to make? Again, that's part of, that's part of the whole conversation. And then, the other one from the AMS thing that I just wanted to point out, I think we're going to start facilities, it's right through that. Little coaster ride of survey report. Um, it's just, you know, um, Kristin Goddard is my job pointing out, we are doing things today in AMS, we're actually it's some instruction, so I think it's just a highlight, as you talk about facilities, like, what does that mean? Is summer instruction taking place in A?
Yeah, I believe that is actually, I mean, we're both broken ground yet, was that supposed to start today or tomorrow? Yeah, and we turned it over, I know it was one, one day earlier, the nineteenth. And can we make a note to have, uh, just no final project or any, any edits or running into for the next meeting of the year. Uh, we have our retreat in July, on July ninth, but maybe just a brief update then, just to see what kind of work, kind of progress, I think mainly the concern is that they're going to be done on time, so long, if they're still on track, if they've discovered anything new, I imagine most of their discovery work would be completed by that point. Uh, so hopefully they'll have some, you know, good news, we don't uncover, uncover any other, uh, surprises during that time. Okay, anything else, uh, with the reports, Chin?
Uh, yeah, just to piggyback a little bit on what Jason said, I had a similar, um, question for uh, later date, but just it mentioned end of, um, year benchmark data in one of the principals' reports, so to, to Jason's point, I'd like to kind of understand more what that had been here. Data. Yeah, um, and then I did email this question ahead of time, that I was happy to receive the answer, so I decided I'd ask it here again. Um, with the literacy curriculum pilot, I was curious if Canada would have an opportunity to be a part of the work, and, uh, Superintendent Barry said that she is going to, we have her involved, so I just wanted to share that with them, it's the board, if anybody else might not wonder, uh, very excited. Right here, and on the key unit then, in AMS, um, which, where in the building did that happen?
Two oh one, the annex.
So not at the session?
No, and it was a clogged condenser pan. So it was unable to drain correctly, so it overflowed and they, uh, Roger and his team have added checking condenser, uh, drains, uh, to the preventive maintenance PM, it's school dude, best name for software. Uh, so it's been added to the PM's. In terms of the, the data, you got, you want to ask Mike or?
Yeah, I can speak to a little bit, you know, and, you know, you'll get a more, uh, you'll get more of an in-depth um, update, it's a live retreat, which is July ninth, um, but I'll keep kind of going back to, we're gonna talk, you know, very much what you see on the dashboard about effectiveness, you know, and, and you get SAS with that, right, and, uh, and, you know, we also have internal points, data points that we take a look at as well, um, when we come in July. Uh, you know, at Amherst, you'll see us talk, uh, with fourth and eighth grade data. You know, coming in here, a little more comprehensible of a look, uh, as you think a little bit about somebody who was outlined in the framework. You know, we're looking for, you know, ten percent growth on effectiveness, you know, in both literacy and math, the hopes of getting to eighty percent across the school. I can tell you, we have pockets where we're, we're really strong, in, in some of our data that outlines our effectiveness, and then we have some areas and pockets where we have to put some more energies to it. Um, but I can, you know, as we get to the board, we'll like to talk a little bit more about it as we, as you guys have a conversation. That's kind of where we're at right now, but expect definitely a more thorough data presentation on July ninth, the first part of the, uh, retreat.
Okay, if, what moved us to take a look at the literacy curriculum, which is the fast part of the question, and some of it was data, but some of it was our desire and Mike's work in the framework is to ensure we're implementing evidence and research-based practices. And to be honest, um, this is why we want to make sure we align our work with what we know works for all kids. And we weren't consistently, completely, in all our literacy blocks, aligning all our instructional strategies, what we now know works. So though we had some strong data in pockets, this is more of aligning with evidence, research-based practices, and adopt a consistent approach. Uh, that we can look at the board, the community, and what we believe in as evidence, research-based. So a little bit of data more is, we know what we, we weren't doing, it's aligned with research. Does that make sense?
No, no, and, you know, I think that's the other piece of the other. The other thing that, that I think is appropriate to mention it, would be taking a look at like program evaluations, you know, of bridges in math in K five. We'll take a bit six-eight math, we're in a little bit of a curriculum review, but if you take a look at fourth grade. You know, we'll get some stuff on A games web, meanwhile, local assessments, particularly with student aptices, right, uh, and take a little bit about, you know, junior, junior, uh, honor society enrollment, and, and who's in, who's involved with that a- as kids, and, uh, so we're trying to give a, a little more of a holistic update on it, uh, with various points. And, uh, but more, more to come, you know, in the, in the competition later today, but absolutely more to come, uh, in July. So you'll really get a good picture where we are, you know, just keep this in mind, for effectiveness. And then for our own growth, and, and we just want to make sure we steer the conversation for both. Um, we want people to be really comfortable with the effectiveness side of it, can consume it from parents to community members to to other boards, but we think the Amherst Board deserves a little more of an in-depth, you know, picture of the fourth and eighth grade. Thank you.
Anything else in our voice?
Okay, so one of the, one of the question, and I don't know the answer, but on the reflections from staff and paraprofessional staff, that's new this year, is that right? Okay, um. Do we know the percentage, was it like a opt-in situation? Like, did they, was it a choice to participate, I'm sorry, I'm, maybe I'm going down the line here and asking questions, uh, things that were presented in the past that I was in present.
So, yeah, the, this was a big year for educator.
Yep.
Yeah, so there was two components, one, for the first time, we evaluated all ASSA, all paraprofessionals. But then, yes, as you said, they have to do a self-reflection, and then we evaluate every single. So it wasn't an opt-in, but because it was a pilot, if anybody wanted to have their evaluation removed from their permanent record. We wouldn't watch. We had, at Amherst, we did not, to my knowledge, I was, and I asked, we did not have anybody, uh, remove their evaluation from their professional file, we had one at South Egan. Uh, so that's on the terrace. And then this summer, we are meeting to reiterate the process, how to go, meeting with administrators, meeting with the paraprofessionals, but if it was meaningful, did it, did it capture? And then on the teacher's side, the teacher's side, um, we evaluated, so for the first time, we did some of the evaluations for two categories of employees. Any employee who was turning into a tenure, any who moved that, that continuing contract, and any employee who was in their third year of their credentials thing. Uh, so we hit, uh, more than a third of our employees received some of the evaluations for the first time, uh, in the district. Um, so that's, both of those are, are significant improvements, um, to reflect upon. Uh, and I, I think we may remain there just because of capacity, um, and there was some weaknesses when we don't um, reflect on newer staff every year, you know, um, but we have, we do have a capacity issue.
Thank you.
And we're also meeting this summer to reiterate that, so we piloted it, and we're gonna approve it, um, we have a day of educator effectiveness. Sorry.
No, that's great, I appreciate, I appreciate you having, uh, breaking that out a little bit, and just, thank you, kudos to, uh, Principal Goddard here for celebration, I was only there for the very end, I think Mr. Prince is there all, like, for most of the day, and I think it was a pretty nice celebration, all of the principals and everything, I know that it was a real team effort there at AMS and um, in all my years of doing things at AMS, that was, that was one of the most special days to walk into the building, I see everybody really lit up and evolved and engaged.
You mentioned all the principals, to be clear, what I mean by that is that we had all five principals that had ever, principal over AMS there. We talked to them about, I thought about how they were, and I'm a school board, so I had a little bit feedback with the generational impact, and heard about the growth of the building, and the teacher's stories, it was really nice to have that history, um, moment, yeah, Terry was there too, right?
I think it was like a her, I, I imagine it was a Herculean effort on the part of, of the team there, so, good job.
Okay, thank you, swag, we got good swag, right?
So you got the teacher, so what? All right, uh, anything else to report, Wes? Okay.
I don't know, yeah, it was mostly, um.
On the, uh, the nutrition.
Yeah, it's primarily due to, uh, paper costs, so, or demand, uh.
So. And obviously, the numbers that we see in January, February, and might have been March, so it's gonna be that surplus, those are rough numbers. Uh, my concern is that we saw, I don't know what accuracy those numbers are presented, if we were thirty percent comfortable, or we were ninety percent comfortable, but my concern would be over the next year, I don't foresee costs going down in that department, so we had a, you know, thirty thousand decrease from what the original surplus expectation were, and what we ended up with, my concern would be is that that trend will continue in the, in falling.
Yeah, yeah.
Mitigation, we have for that.
We.
Because we still have an overall surplus in that fund, right, this, this, okay, so we're fine. Right, yeah, and twelve is added, twelve is just this year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's, and that's essentially why we have that, that surplus in there, is it runs it like to business essentially.
Yeah, and it, and it, it's great because, you know, we don't have to do a, a transfer of the general.
And God forbid something worries, or we can fix it right away.
Exactly. Yeah, the other districts have to typically be budgeted for a transfer from the job, but to cover.
Why is that, why, why are we different?
Yep.
One thing that Mike has done, Crystal now attends leadership meetings, once a week. So we get regular updates, and she's monitoring, we have a discussion about pricing, and leaderships, and Crystal regularly attends leadership meetings.
One thing I mentioned, that's all I should, because you guys, that always concern me, Tom's talking about, with the prices go up. I always worry that people will say, well, we're going to keep prices, or costs flat, by decreasing quality. It's, it's precious, especially the morning, and I know she's did a great job, that's why I mentioned that we support, I support, you know, more funding for her. It's just.
She would not say.
That's great, here.
Most regulated piece of.
Okay.
So it's the most regulated, same, second most, and probably it's maybe the most under-regulated basis, or maybe it's over-regulated, I should say, yeah. I, uh, we could have a long conversation about, uh, the regulations for the food pyramid and recommendations, it's now, it's the plate. Yes. So, yeah. All right, um, supplementary reports, does anybody have any supplementary reports of notes? I know we're a bit of a, a low right now, a bit of a downtime, if there's anything I know you would like to share, Chin?
So unfortunately, our scheduled, um, June thirteenth building and grounds meeting was canceled due to an inability at the last minute to meet in-person requirements, uh, but a tour at AMS was taken by several members of the committee, uh, Chair, she recently arranged that, and Roger Preston led that group around AMS. Uh, and Ms. Grayson has provided the committee with preparatory information to discuss future phases of the AMS, for each that work. And as a leadership, uh, parent to lead a discussion regarding potential financing and faith options for the committee to consider what we can, again, uh, and then unfortunately, as you all know, we have lost two members, one to remove and one to work demands, uh, so. We have a point, I would also suggest maybe, um, some alternates, because it is difficult to meet the in-person um, in a meeting for a requirement, so that was just kind of a thought that I had earlier today, that if we had some alternates on, on the.
Yeah, and I, and I think, we, we can, we can certainly discuss this right now, then, I think we had it as a separate agenda item, um, but Greg and I discussed, we're the ones that originally looked at those applications, and, and Greg brought up a good point that we need two positions to fill now, so once we're having alternates, I think the wisest thing for us to do is to be a little bit slower with it, but maybe put another call for application letters out there, we can fine-tune a little bit to get qualifications, we can discuss the actual information we want to put out there, but right now, we just don't have enough candidates to fill all, or any, say, in the positions that eligible from that last round, so I think if we open it back up again for a week or ten days, put out the call for it, and then just review that, and I think we can have something decided by that July ninth meeting. Um, and, and I don't think much is gonna happen between now and July ninth, I think we have a little bit of time, uh, because they are working on AMS, but I'll take your, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine, I wouldn't want to go beyond July, because there is.
For sure.
Uh, there is work to be done when we're talking about the phasing of the group at the HVAC that could take more than one meeting, right, to, to hash that out, and we'd like to bring a recommendation to the board ahead of budget season, you know, ahead of budget season, um, depending on what that recommendation, the booking line. Uh, just so, so we can start laying that out, uh, so, and, and obviously, the committee can meet ahead of pointing, you know, I don't know if it makes more sense to point those two positions now and open it up before, or?
I'd rather just do it all at one time, and I'd rather do it all at once, because I think, again, you have everything done by July ninth, because it only takes two of us to be able to meet the applications, if we get something, let's say, Tuesday? Yes, Tuesday today, so we could certainly have it closed before the end of the month, and then, uh, Greg and I, or, you know, if you want Greg and I to continue with that. We could meet and look at, uh, candidates and alternatives, we can discuss it at the July ninth retreat, take ten minutes and discuss better, unless, or if you'd like to, then treat, and then, you know, if you mean second week of July, or third week of July, around that thirteenth time, Greg and Ken, you can still have time to do that, and again, I don't think three and a half weeks is gonna off, so I wouldn't want to go much beyond that, but I think that would give us time to just put the pillars out there again. Uh, and just be a little more specific, Amherst residents, you know, kids in the school district, stuff that we weren't as specific last time, we're doing, and, yeah. No, I, I, excuse me, I didn't mean, it's a school district, I meant, you have to live in town, I was.
That's okay.
But, yeah, you have to be a town resident, it's active, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, if that's good with everybody, I can come up with, uh, and just share with, uh, somebody else, just giving them a set of eyes on, but just ask for, well, if we last time, we just shared with it, you know, tell us why you want to be on it, but any qualifications, any thoughts you have on that, I think.
No, I had that was really good feedback last round, so. Great, I guess, so the other question is, I know that, um, Christine is trying to reschedule the meeting that we just had. So she threw some dates out, I think one was maybe this Friday.
Friday, this Friday, and they come.
By second?
Oh, that was, yeah, that was.
Yeah, yeah, the Tuesday, so, um, in an effort to start hearing some of these options for the phasing of group project, and if we're getting, you know, I just want to make sure we're giving her good direction as a board.
Correct, and I didn't really, I'm not on those email chains, so I didn't see that those were out there, my only concern is, are you gonna be doing a lot of double work? You have two new, two or three or four new members in Alberta that are on any place by July ninth, or you're just doubling work for them, so I'm wondering if they just want to hold off for three weeks and then schedule that for that.
Okay, and then my last question, then, so that we're, if they're our real clear directive and folks in the community, if you've been applied for this first round, and you're so interested, do you need to now reschedule?
No, I think, I think if they're still in, just let us know that they're still interested, and then we'll just add anybody else on, or I don't think that's stupid, it's necessarily they're reapply, uh. I'm not saying everybody else thinks differently, but.
I don't, I mean, I don't mean to remember, there were quite many.
There were, there were only three that were still town residents.
It'd be kind of, um, kind of direction to about, like, your family, what, what can we look for?
Yeah.
Yeah, welcome in, resonates, it's something like a school resume, it's kind of helpful in some, in some regard, but, yeah, we talked about we talked about three, that'd be, how about like, uh, you know, are you an Amherst resident? Uh, I think we're considering things like, um, how long you've been a resident, or any kind of building, sort of oversight, experience, building so factor, kind of skills, right, Tom, you can add about of that maybe, not required, but good to know, those kind of things, uh, for building grounds, right, or other public service, maybe you're you know, or a teacher, or, uh, you know, like, those kind of roles are also, you know, different perspectives.
Yeah, it necessarily needs to be construction at all.
No, no, but they ask, are you? Experience, your experience, uh, yeah, good, good patient, obstruction, uh, anything like that.
Yeah.
Those are all good, good questions to ask. So we're, we're a little more, feels a little more like they're engaging in parallel.
Well, I just don't want to submit to, it's like to somebody saying, I'm interested, and I have no, you know, we have no ability to judge what their credentials are, they could be, you know, they could build the Empire State Building. Right, I have no idea, it's right.
Hold on, I mean, I think the challenge was, some people did provide a lot of that information, and someone else may have also had an equally amazing background, but we didn't ask him, so.
Exactly.
No, right? Yeah, that's, okay, great. So we'll.
Do you want to let, uh, Christine know, I don't mind holding off, we'll, um, we'll get everything. We'll get this posted, we'll get it, for applications, and Greg and I will need to come up with recommendations for the board for July ninth, and then we can uh, just review those July ninth, and after that, we'll be able to. Yeah.
Is there any ideas that we have, like, four more days, or where they'd be able to meet for July ninth, anyway?
Yeah, it's a crunch, I think the concern is, I mean, once you get to July, and you also become challenged, schedules, and vacations, and, and things like that, but I don't know that it was going to happen any year. Uh, in the next two weeks, so, uh, but I, I do think at our July ninth meetings, when we do this, I would like us to also talk about the timeframe that we would like to direct that committee, um, towards for the AMS project. Just so, you know, you know, I don't, I think it would be fair to give them such a timeline, so that if additional meetings could be scheduled, or or whatnot, uh, it's not a last minute sort of.
Greg, when you say that, you mean like a deadline or something, or say like?
Yeah, what's our expectation to, uh, Christine, as the chair, come in and present? You know, I, I think that would be the right way to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, to have her kind of, if she, you know, if she's available.
Or set up a report.
Whatever, but just.
Have it somehow unofficially.
You're just talking about they recommend, well, that's, that's been the best ways.
Correct, yeah, and obviously, I'm, my feelings, it needs to be ahead of budget season, but we can talk about that part.
That'd be nice.
Nice, yeah.
All right, uh, any other supplementary stuff? Hi, Terry.
I'm sorry.
Life happens, that's good, I'm glad you're here. Hope you lost them as unemployed as opposed to something worse. Right, uh, Chin, yes.
So Recreation Commission, I just wanted to share that the, um, ARD Director, Frank Freely, is a key forward to serving and he is awaiting, uh, an invitation, whatever. So that's kind of my share out.
He's out of here, right?
The, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right under the, the air conditioner, uh, the Recreation Director, Fred Freely, is happy to have the invitation to serve on the property in the torch, many, we maintain most of our property, so he'll be watching for the invitation.
Thanks. Great.
Yeah, he, he would be integral.
Yeah, perfect, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, so moving on to the next item is our SBA Delegate Assembly, so nothing we really need to do here tonight, other than a, a bit of homework, so the Delegate Assembly is a chance for board members to submit, uh, articles or resolutions that they want the NHSDA to review uh, into a doc, we haven't had participation in the last couple of years, simply because we haven't had any articles or resolutions that we've submitted in a group. Um, but just to review the timeline, uh, August second is their deadline for any articles that the Amherst School Board wants to recommend for them to discuss at the Delegate Assembly in October, so in our July meeting, if we have anything that we want to discuss or present, we would do it in that July meeting, we could vote on it. And then we would give our delegate representative the opportunity to go to the Delegate Assembly, and I We could vote on it and then we would give our delegate representative the opportunity to go to the Delegate Assembly and actually vote on those articles. So the timeline we established based off the NHSBA guidelines were, um, any draft articles we wanna discuss in July. Will vote on those and have those ready to submit to NHSBA by the August second deadline. In September, we were going to discuss any other articles submitted by other boards that are of interest to us, anything that we wanna support. And then give our delegate the authority to support at Delegate Assembly. And then the assembly itself is, I believe, October nineteenth. I didn't write the specific date out, but it's, it's in the mid-October. Um, so we have somebody that, I know Shannon, you said you were interested in going to that.
Did, yeah. Last year it fell on my daughter's birthday, so that was unfortunate. Uh, but this year it's the weekend after. I think I can make that.
And if we have someone to present or be a part, certainly.
Yeah, I don't know because I've, you know, never been, if you vote on the continuing resolutions or not, but they have one that actually, I was like, oh, we should do a resolution about. Allowing subcommittees to meet without an in-person forum. And that's actually the first resolution on their list. Um, so they're, they're worth taking a look at for sure. Um, and I would certainly be interested in going.
So anything that we want to present, if you have any ideas or any resolutions you'd like to present, come with it, uh, in July. And then we can discuss that. And if not, we can move the rest of it. We can review the rest of that list in September. To be able to send Shannon to the meeting in October with voting recommendations from board.
Sorry, it was leaving the ones they have, like, what was it, the past last year, they're written in a sort of plain English, they're not written in like legalese. So like, I'm interested in talking about that, with the twelve and thirteen of the, uh, way to vote. To, to discussion, I'm interested, like, having that make more sense. But so, I don't, I don't wanna write the legal language, be stuck with it. So I can write. Regular English paragraphs and like suggest it to them. And then if, if adopted. They then take it and. Bobby, Bob, Bobby, will it, they should make some kind of legal change, that what happens? Okay, so I'm not bothered writing.
You're gonna write.
I'm just writing. Here's a problem, here's a general fix. And everyone agrees, they can move forward. Okay, that's great. I will have some.
Cause I think anything that we do still has to be, that has to go through the state RFAs or has to go through state legislation. So is there just a formal way to collect numerous board ideas and, uh, be able to collaborate together on this?
Yeah, and even if we don't submit anything, it's a good opportunity to hear what other. Other districts and folks around the state are, you know, doing, if we're interested in supporting that, right? Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to, to leverage more of our NHSBA, uh, membership and support. I feel like it's a really great resource.
All right, so the Delegate Assembly is done. We'll move on now to unassigned fund balance to Ms. Facey with projections. And then the discussion on how we would like to handle this for the end of the year.
Yeah. So I gave everybody, um, hot office press updated projection and. A list of projects to refer to. So if you wanna take, uh, a look at the unassigned fund balance projections first. You'll see between, um, additional revenue, um, over and above what was projected. And savings in expenditures. Um, we have a total. Unassigned fund balance and the general fund, because we have to back out the food service fund. Um, of one point two three five million. Um, of that, we will be, uh, funding the capital reserves expendable, uh, trust fund. For six, six seventy-five that was approved on our fourteen, uh, will be funding seventy-five thousand for the technology. Expendable trust fund, which was more our fifteen and thirty thousand for the vehicle expendable trust fund to our sixteen. Uh, we also projected a tax effort offset of three eighty-five. Um, so that total is one point one six five million. So the balance between what we're projecting for fund balance as of right now. Um, and what we are, uh, committed either for warrant articles or what we said we would offset the tax rate by. Um, during deliberative session, uh, we have a balance of a little over seventy thousand dollars, so seventy thousand two hundred. Um, there's a couple items in here I'll point out to you. If you notice on the revenue. We are under in our Medicaid revenue projection, which is not typical. We, we use a outside vendor to help with, uh. Medicaid billing, which is where we, we receive reimbursement, uh, from the federal government. On students who are, uh, special needs students. So. Right now, um, we're using this one particular company. We had a lot of challenges. Uh, and, and working with, uh, talking to other VAs across the state, they've got similar challenges. Uh, we had already decided to go with a different vendor for next year that I think will make things easier. Uh, we're behind in, um, some of our billing, which means we haven't received. Necessarily all the reimbursement that we're entitled to. That still may come in. Uh, we don't, we'll close the books, but we'll, we won't be all done with, um. With all of our reporting. Into July. So if we do receive additional Medicaid funding. We can look and see what the claims are attached to, which they would be attached to F Y twenty-four, so we can apply that. So I'm, I'm gonna hold out maybe a little bit longer and so that we can recognize that. Then the F Y twenty-four period.
So it's one twenty-two grand that we're short right now?
Typically, we hit that number. We're usually conservative in what we estimate, so. So that's one number where we could have, potentially have additional money. Um, the other projections, you know, we're always pretty conservative. We do have another, uh, payroll cycle, so wanna not say that all of our balance is gonna be available. Uh, particularly in the, uh, regular ed and special ed. Uh, you'll see a lot of the other, uh, projections are relatively close to what our balance is right now. Uh, most of the savings came from, uh, some retirement savings. We had some reduced number of retirements. Um, we have four three B and health and dental collection savings. So we, we budget what we. Uh, what we, we, we think and then folks make different changes.
Hey, yes, a quick question on the health and dental. Does that, that money go back into? Health trust? Doesn't that come as some sort of reimbursement offset cost next year? There's, I'm, I'm totally drawing a blank and have the mechanism for it, but I feel like. We got reimbursed by health trust for that last year and it goes to a teacher's fund of some sort, doesn't it? Or is it back to the district?
Well, that's.
Elections. This is someone who we budgeted for family, they only needed the two. Yeah, this is, this isn't the.
It's not that. Um, we had some, uh, vacancies due to some unfortunate circumstances. Savings there. Most of it.
At the top, food service funds is minus thirteen three. Is it supposed to be minus twelve three?
No, it's offset by the expenditures. So the twenty-five, six, so if you add. Two together, it's the twelve three, which. So that's where we are with projections. I do expect there to be more, but, um. We, we don't like to overpromise. So we'll, we'll close the books at the end of the month and, um, tie everything up in July and we'll know. So the other sheet you have is potential projects. And when we. Last meeting, have you done the levels? Okay, so, yeah, so we've gathered, um, these projects from. Principals, from facilities, uh. Talked to. A T. So this is the, the list that was put together and we did some work to, uh, categorize these by level. So level one is safety and efficiency. Level two is facility and educational priorities and level three is climate. So what we're asking the board to do tonight is to approve an up to dollar amount. Based on this list of projects. And when we get to July and we know exactly how much we have. Um, we would have, have the authority from these folks to be able to lead, uh, those projects up to a specific dollar. Yeah.
Okay, uh, anything else you wanna get up on that, Amy?
They're leveled. Drive by that, but within the levels. We, we haven't finalized our, they're not in order.
So they're just groups by priority, uh, by priority groups, not priority order into groups.
And it will depend on how much we have, like.
Sure.
We, we have ten thousand and we need to do this project. We don't have to.
If I have.
Right.
Oh, you can't. Yeah, makes sense.
But we'll certainly take, uh, take feedback, obviously, yes.
Terry, you had your hammer first?
I did, um. And actually, my question is about the van. So. Is it sixty-one plus the thirty that we're putting into the fund for it? Or would it?
We are funding, uh, the thirty.
Okay, so, so would it only be thirty-one would be the difference of what we need to get funded outside of. The vehicle flies.
The warrant article was to be ready to maintain and fix our fleet. Not as they purchase for this being.
Okay, so.
Separately, once we have the thirty in there, because we have a fleet, you know, we've got four or five vehicles. If we lose a transmission on the other vehicles, we can take that out of maintenance. So it wasn't, uh, it wasn't connected to the purchase of this van. It was separate, it was to support the maintenance of our.
Cause we do have other vehicles already. There's like twenty-five year old, a twenty, a twenty-five year old car, yeah. So just it's more to cover those while we build the fleet. The, the van separately.
Thank you for explaining the difference, cause I cannot remember how that. Okay, thank you.
So I appreciate, I said this at the meeting, where we talked about this before, the leveling, um, on level one, science chemical disposal. I would prefer that we're not waiting on fund balance for that. Is there any other way that we can? Put anybody on the spot, but I, I, and it's a small amount, so I think I'm hearing you say we should have the money and it shouldn't be a problem, but. When I look at this, that's a, a less, you know, lower dollar amount, but it's a really important thing to take care of. I mean, if you all say. No matter what, do that. I would expect there to be funds available and. We'll go into. So I move that no matter what, we dispose of the chemicals at AMS.
What are, what are the chemicals?
So, um.
How they store it, like.
And so we, we spent some time, um, so. This year, there, we have an acid safe. Uh, a, a, a safe for, you know. That cabinet slash safe, uh, is corroding. It's old. Uh, it contains chemicals that we have no use.
These are older chemicals, like not just one school year, these are chemical.
So we've uncovered in, under Kristen and Amy and Mike. Insistence on zero-based budgeting. Uh, we will improve our storage and our accounting for supplies that support our. All our programs. Uh, but currently in the middle school, best practice in middle school science is what's called kitchen chemistry. So when currently, when we have a project in Amherst Middle School and Science, we can simply go to Hannaford. And buy what we need. Um, that hasn't always been the case. And you, we actually toured, cause, cause we called, so there's a company about. Somewhere around seventy-five, we're gonna come and take away these chemicals. But because of the volume of the chemicals and some of them unused containers, we actually worked with the science department, had the domain leader at South Eagan to go shopping. And to see if there was anything in the middle school that we could gladly, gladly give to the high school program, which isn't kitchen chemistry, that's actually chemistry. Um, but there was nothing there that they would use, like we have twenty bottles of things. That one bottle will last five years. So we have, this is reorganizing and, and, and reprioritizing and ensuring we budget for what we need. Um, so there's lots of, there's lots of chemicals, the ones that are. You know, we're very concerned about the acids are locked up. It is locked up, it's been locked up. Like, like I said, with the combinations, we didn't know, I'm just kidding. Um, and so, and the, and the others are stored in a safe way. So, but there's a whole bunch of them. We no longer need to support our middle school chemi, uh, middle school science program. And we're very much looking forward to bringing in Clean Harbors or a firm like that. That comes in and takes them. And but, um, I, I don't, I don't know all the chemical names. But I know that they're of no use to South Eagan and they're of no use to us.
So I, I, I make the motion that, um. Where this list stands, that we take care of the chemical disposal at Amherst Middle School prior to students returning to the. That's my motion. I second that.
The number one.
As the number one priority.
Well, as number one priority. Is that what you want your motion?
Want to take care of however we. Even it, yeah, like, I don't know what. Motion, I would like, I mean, if, if we have the money sitting somewhere that.
I think they're, they're saying, I have the seventy thousand, so that's, that's. The seventy thousand, I think.
So can I ask a question on this? So the. The quote is here, this from, we discussed that right before we. The quote here is for cattle removal, it's also for the cabinet, couple cabinet removal.
Yes.
Okay, it's everything. Yeah, cause if you're getting. They're, they're getting promoted by the. Act and that'd be breathing the air too. Clean Harbor is a great.
That's the vendor that we use. I don't know what Roger uses. But it's, uh, we know, or like. But that's one of the most common school vendors.
Yeah, in my experience, this is, this will be the third chemical. Removal that I've been involved in, in my career. Did one of the first couple of years at White Mountains, once it was discovered, did it again. And so Eagan, once it was discovered. And we're doing it. It happened. Supervised, right? And you're not paying attention to it. And, and so we are knowledgeable and now we're ready to.
This is all the right, like, this, this, all the acid that's not, not Hannaford quality, right? Not vinegar and baking soda. Everything that requires a license is like gonna be taken out of AMS now. We proved this.
Everything we don't need is supported.
Okay, it, when you get chemistry, I, I assume that everything will be, will be for chemistry. Is there anything in the grade level that's not? First of all, Hannaford.
Not to my knowledge, from the principal who's the scientist.
Gotcha.
She told me that person.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate the support.
So we have a motion to fund this project instead of any fund balance that we have. So we, any other discussion points on that? Okay, all in favor? Five in favor, none against. So that we have seventy-five hundred minimum that we'll put on there. So we mark that down now. Um, in terms of other items that are on this list, or what we typically done, I break you, I don't know if you recall, but we basically just said, well. Uh, we authorize the administration to spend up to X number of dollars, uh, and then they can choose the projects that are, uh, their priority. Hence Shannon's desire to make sure the cabinets were our priority, make sure those get taken care of. So we can fund, I think, whatever motion we wanna put out there is to fund up to X number of dollars minus seventy-five hundred. Knowing that that's gonna be the priority. So if it's seventy thousand, we say we have another sixty-two, but five. That we would authorize the administration to spend on projects. So I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion, if anybody wants to discuss further items on this list. Um, my concern with items in tier two. For bookcases, classroom furniture and cafeteria tables. To me, those are budget items. And I'm concerned that they're not in a budget. These are surprises, uh, especially the cafeteria tables. It's a five-year plan. I feel like we need to get those into a budget item, uh, more as a capital expense as opposed to a fund balance. I'm not sure if there's a reason why they were. Put in here, if these were items that were taken out of the budget.
So most of the things on this list, including the furniture and some of the items you mentioned, were removed from the budget before it got to the first draft. As a. As kind of instructed by budget committees and, and board members prior to the first budget being presented, right? The goals of the budget were. Influence what made it into the first draft. Influence what made it into the first draft, which presented, but I can tell you, I can build in principle. Every year they're asking for tables. Faces and very rarely do they make it to. It's like so, um, however, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we can, we can kinda highlight and emphasize different things and. It's from this, because it is a. They.
What's the um? Boiler plumb rebuild, replace. What's driving force behind that? That's mean that we need, it doesn't leave its end of life, or that's something that. Why why is it that? Back it up.
No longer stable, no longer secure. Okay, and typically. You're not too long after April vacation. We're trying to close the books, trying to figure out what the fund balance is, and sometimes. We don't do regular purchases in the last six weeks of school. Most of the purchases need to be done, so if this, if this pops in the last three weeks, it's coming to fund balance.
Right.
Check.
Right.
Because it's in the mix.
But that that might wanna move up to level one then, under. Safety and efficiency. To uh, facility priorities. Is that important or is it?
Yeah. You're rather comfortable with this. The. Just the item to to give some thought. There's um, an FM amplification system that is opportune time. This, as you know, we are impacting twelve rooms through the new HVAC, which is being like vented. Right, it's no longer in the window unit, so the ceilings are down. When the ceilings are down, it's opportune time to wire and install an FM auditory system. Something that uh, when I was a, my past job, part of the building project was to outfit every classroom in the entire district with a FM amplification system. Um, two adjacent districts from where I uh, lived, uh, did the same thing as part of facility work. And currently at the Amherst Middle School, there uh, at one point, there were seven classrooms. That were wired for FM amplification system. Those are now fifteen years old, only two remain functioning. Um, these are the uh, this technology, the old technology is infrared technology, now Bluetooth technology. Uh, and so. What we'd like to do is while the ceilings are down, while it's absolutely open. Is to purchase and install, um, and it's a firm bid of twelve, a firm amount of twenty eight thousand dollars. Would give us twelve systems in the in those classrooms, um, which would provide equal. Auditory uh, sound, no matter where you are positioned in the room. So if you're in the front or if you're in the back, you have the exact same receipt of scent. If you are to the right, to the left, even in the pie shape, so. I I worked, uh, I I visited with the audiologist who installed it, and I was in a classroom with the old. Functioning. There's two classrooms that function right now. And I was just curious about how it works. An open wall, if it's open wall, cause the wall was open, and could I hear it in the other room? And this is fifteen year old technology, and it was still pretty focused on the pie, you would mean, you know, the. Pie, as opposed, it didn't bleed too much, even with the open wall. So it's really in that, and to be honest. Those were installed by our maintenance staff fifteen years ago without the science and understanding of. You know, the bows, stuff bows, you know, I'm saying that kind of stuff, so. Um. There's three, there's three ways to fund these. One is we can take a lot of fund balance if we have the money, twenty eight thousand dollars. The other is, and we did talk with Roger, um, to see if this could fit in the contingency of the project itself. The one point six five, there's uh, there's fifty thousand dollars. Uh, in the contingent, the EEI taking contingency there piece. If you remember from building grounds, we did take a little piece of it because there was one roof, a little bit of roof above. The SRO office, if you remember, that wasn't uh, in the original design, it was about thirteen grand of contingency. Um, Roger, and has much more experience of this, is uncomfortable committing. Over fifty percent that of the contingency before we even lift it up, of shame. Yeah, I'm not really shameful, sorry, but you know, but before he actually exposed it, and he's not comfortable with saying, okay, Steve, well, take the twenty seven out of contingency. There is one thought about, we've talked about one point seven million, but it's. It's not, so what we, there isn't really a fifty thousand dollar buffer there, because we're just simply taking exactly what it costs out of the trust. You women, so it's either fund balance, contingency Rogers not being incredibly excited to give up that much contingency for the project officially begins. And the other alternative is we can take this out of the building maintenance trust, have a public hearing, and take the twenty eight. It's the timing and and is of essence, because what you don't wanna do is have a wonderful new roof and then start chopping it up to put in the FM system. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And the timing is perfect to do this, and um, it really, when I talked to the audiologist. I I haven't seen him any staff members happier than I said, we're working hard trying to get this a universal. This is a universal accommodation where everybody benefits. There are some kids, right, who necessary, right? Uh, it's critical for some, but it's good for all. And I promise you that every single student having clear um, sound, no matter where you're on the room, is of value.
Question?
Yeah.
So. I know there are some for the students who require that specific accommodation, so is that the classroom exam where the teacher has to wear the microphone?
The lavalier, we'll have a lavalier mic.
But so now how do we accommodate, how do we accommodate now we don't?
So we have, um, we have port, we have portable. Uh, and so we had, portables are not, life, life expectancy not as long. And what we, what you don't wanna do, what we're trapped in, I'm actually trying to work on South Eagan as well, it's the same thing. Is like we now, we 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 actually put kids in certain rooms based on availability of sound equipment. Or we have the portable based on sound equipment. And what we really want to get to is a universal design. Where every student benefits and it's part of, and as the audiologist said, this is not a special ed accommodation, this is an accommodation for everybody. So it's not unlike having sound in the theater. Right, and we we how frustrated we are, we don't like the theater sound, it's the same thing, so. But now we accommodate through the placement of aging. Portals. Or two fits. One is um, a science, so it's an eighth grade science. Um, so the youngster, anybody who needs. A hearing will be on that team in that room. You with me? Always assigned to that room. And the same thing, the other one uh, is, and then if they're not in those grade, late grade science, and we have a portable that is it's placed there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, but I had another part to my question, but if someone else has a question, I.
I have a question.
Okay, so this is um, if we didn't have fun balance. And we needed to pull from the building maintenance trust and hold a public hearing. We obviously don't know that tonight, and work is starting in that building this week, like when in the project? In the lifespan of the project, does do we need to have a decision as to how we're funding that if we choose to do that?
If we're willing to take it out of, I mean. Like Amy and I, last year, we took fund balance six months after, but we don't like to do, like to do it before, right? And so I would ask the superintendent to have a public hearing. Day of the. Treaty.
Okay, yeah.
Be super. And that way, but we have time for the night, because it's, you know, the ceilings aren't gonna be completely open and closed by the night, it's ten days. And they weren't, Brian is working with EEI, EEI knows about this, just knows about this, it's in planning stage, not implementation stage.
My question on how it's used, let's not play with it, so. Somewhere that. The uh, teacher can project through a microphone. Through a Bluetooth connection to the speaker, and it can project a different voice, and also can student have headphones on and receive it.
So if if a, if a student um, needs more of an accommodation, yes, there are.
Perfect, okay. And then one system will allow for all that.
That is correct, yeah. Uh, and there's also a portable mic. That I could go up and ask questions if I, you know, to Amy and say, you know, if you have a. So the students can talk through the portable mic, the teacher talks to the lavalier mic. And students who require specific, especially in hop, it was cochlear implants.
Right.
The the students who had cochlear implants were connected to this, uh, right.
Interesting. And so today, can you talk about the problem we have today without without funding this? What's the opportunity cost? We don't, don't fund this, just have. Terrible people on, people aren't hearing, but how bad is that? We have combinations like right now, we have, like you mentioned, but the collar, people can find a way to get this done without spending money or or no, how?
Yeah, so we would continue the current practice, which is two rooms targeted in portables, and we would replace the portables. Uh, the portables are cheaper, they're about four thousand dollars. Um. And twelve divided by, well, actually, it's cheaper to do the rooms.
Exactly.
Twelve divided by twenty four, sorry.
So four thousand dollars each right now, so twelve rooms, it would be what?
Fifty.
Thirty eight, right? And so now we have a twenty eight.
And then everybody benefits, and you do the entire, by doing it now, we do the entire grade level?
And these last for as long as the roof, essentially, right? Last forever?
No, I don't think forever, um, but I would, I'm very confident, I think warranty is ten last.
Okay.
And it's, um. And I, you know, I. Just back, I've I've been in a lot of class, we are still a school where the teacher talks. We are auditory processing business, not always, not enough, but significantly enough that if we can improve the sound. And teachers, what what the research shows, when teachers don't have to amplify to reach the back of the room, they have much more energy throughout the day, because they're talking like this. And they're hearing me at the back, and so that means they have energy for other. Sorry.
So. Sha, thank you for explaining a little bit more about line items, but I would say overall. I I feel comfortable with administration choosing the priority beyond the chemicals that we've already highlighted. That I'm comfortable with y'all choosing priority and and just picking an amount that you do up to. And um, this is one area where I am a broken record, that I'd rather spend every penny I have before I ask for a dollar more. And so knowing that we may get additional funds between now and when we do it. I would like to authorize up to, say, ninety thousand, eighty thousand, I mean, what might be a realistic number?
For two seventy.
Yeah, let me, let me, Amy, on the um, the other sheet of the fund balance projections, it says your. Balance is one, three, four, eight, and your year end projection is one, zero, six, nine. So there's a delta there about two hundred and eighty thousand. Do you think you're gonna use that full two eighty between now?
Oh, between the year end and um, the year to date, you mean, and then.
Yeah.
Your end projection. Yeah, I think there's money there. I do. I mean.
So so my, my thought here is, are there any projects on this list that anybody is opposed? Cause if you have the delta, the two eighty there, plus their seventy, you're looking at three hundred and fifty thousand. So if you authorize a two seventy, whatever it comes in for the, between the year end and the actual balance, whatever that number comes in. It's gonna be somewhere between two seventy and seventy. Or three seventy, seventy, three fifty and seventy.
Obviously, whatever language works to do as much as we possibly can. So that would be up to. The.
Two hundred and seventy five thousand, yeah. So my question is, is anybody morally opposed to any of these projects where they don't wanna see them funded? Out of assigned fund balance, but prefer that they're either put in a budget or prefer that they're not funded at all? Cause I would prefer not to have to do a public hearing for the. Auditory system, only for the fact that we have a limited amount of funds in there, and we're still getting into a whole lot more roof projects, so. Whether we bond an additional twenty eight thousand to pay for the next phase of the roof, or if we have an additional twenty eight thousand to take out of the capital reserve fund. I would rather do that than have to bond something that's gonna have interest on it.
Thank you.
Down road for the AMS roof project, we take twenty eight grand out of the capital reserve bond. Yeah, but we have.
For future face.
For future facing, yeah.
Right, now this becomes the standard as we move.
Yes. Well, it does, it becomes a standard for whatever we do. If the next phase of the project takes. Five million, whether we do any more audit for it, the next phase of the project is five million. And we just took an addition, if we have a million in there, we're bond four million as opposed to. Four or three hundred, whatever, three hundred million, three million, nine hundred and seventy two thousand, we'd have to bond, because we took twenty eight out of that fund earlier than anticipated.
Right.
I'd rather not touch that account, because it's gonna be fairly diminished after this round. But I I don't wanna raise my, to a moral objection, but a question on the bookcases, the Wilkins Library. Um. It says, the place plus will say, are these portable bookcases on wheels? Even though books on them?
Yeah, it's, they have blocks, right?
And they do. Okay.
So they're not like moving off, right? Off the blocks.
Correct, yeah.
Even furniture wise, would transfer to a new building?
I remember that story, I know, but I don't understand the, where it's flexible space.
Yeah.
But I, the way we're trying to, I think we built something, bought some, or you guys bought, I was on here, like some. Furniture that you were gonna move last year for Wilkins, I think it was.
Some of those tables that are.
Yeah.
Those are.
Different bookcases, so. Uh, right now, the bookcases are kind of uh. Like a a labyrinth, so that you can go and see everything, it's being portable, so you could move to the side, a little bigger space, some kind of story hours.
Exactly, so two classrooms can come in.
I heard it that way, right?
Three hundred. It's continuing the.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we've been picking.
The furniture question, your first question about putting on a budget, you think if we're paying to do it this way, you think?
I think because it's, I think we're we're beyond the point for, cause if this would be another year where we wait for that, I would like to see as as Mike continues with administration, we saw. Some scaling down the budget this year, I would assume that those are the goals we still have going forward, so as we start to scale down, we we start to get uh. You know, other areas of priority, we start to build these things in there, is again, I'm sure that they were in there before, but I think we were awfully quick to remove them, kinda like we used to with technology, Terry, so. I think that's someone we have to, you know, we have to budget for new furniture, it doesn't last forever. And while their small items are easy to take out, they are necessary, you can have, you know, busted chairs, and you know, we have a lot of wooden furniture scenes in places, I'm sure that's not the most efficient to. Have their own work, it's not like it's solid over anything. Uh. I think for for now, Greg, I'm I'm more comfortable with it now, um, but I would like to start, you know, and again, it's on us too, to make sure that we're. Not removing those as easy. Wings to take out of the budget, knowing that long term, we're gonna need that.
Yeah, having a um, a long term FFNA. Plan is next up. We got technology and FFNA is next.
Okay, so does anybody wanna make a motion for up to next dollars to allow the administration to allocate an assigned fund balance?
Well, I started, so which we wanna make the amount, but just that two seventy then?
To me, two seventy, two seventy five, if you wanted two seventy, two twenty, it's something in that range would be sufficient.
How about we'll round up to two seventy five? If you're giving me the option, I'll take it.
Then we'll think, please the. Seven, you wanna deduct the seventy five hundred that you already can.
Yeah, so.
Two seventy.
Now the priority, let's, we'll fund it, we didn't fund that, we just.
We just say, take that first out of the uh.
We don't know exactly how much it's gonna be, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, so we have a motion then, Terry.
Second.
You're gonna say, do we have a motion?
Yes, yes, my wish, two seventy five.
Two seventy five, okay. Right?
Yep.
And Shannon, second, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Four, five, and I will pass the embassy, so. Or allocates a two hundred and seventy five dollars for an assigned fund balance. Hundred seventy five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
That's seven K, probably, but two hundred and seventy five K.
Getting more. And we'll keep you updated, um, when we know how much we have and what the projects are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and then anything extra that would go back to. This is the free eighty five, the free eighty five.
Yeah. You got it.
And their projects that they determined they don't wanna do or more of that. Okay, uh, personnel discussion. Uh, before we do that, I do wanna just open it up quickly. Uh, for for Mike talks about new folks coming on, we do have some retirements this year, so we wanna thank. Uh, almost what, seventy years of experience out of Clark Wilkins retiring this year, which is always a big hit, whenever you use that much institutional knowledge and experience, but. Uh, thankful for Linda Brennec, Yale Cole, O'Karen, Hopper, and Deanna Courts, all retiring this year, and then AMS and Rokio Dodge as well. Uh, so five staff and teachers, I know Linda and Deanna are both nurses. Uh, so their jobs are very important at that school level, but we wish them the best of luck and. Thank them very much for their dedicated service to not only students in New Hampshire, but. Almost seven years of service just in the Clark Wilkins Amherst District as well, and we wish them again. Happy retirement and a long retirement where they can enjoy it, spend time doing whatever their uh, their hearts content. We'll take them over the next few years. So with that, Mike, we have some people coming in, not necessarily to take their place, but new faces that will start starting next year.
So what I'll do is, as Shannon uh, stepped off her second, come back in, we'll do a couple of things first. It's one, an overall update in the Amherst School District. Uh, we're in pretty good shape with the hiring process. Or uh, school system in New Hampshire right now, and we feel really good about it. And it starts with the building level administrators and their hiring teams, as they kind of, you know, begin there, but that's also in in real partnership and collaboration with the Human Resource Department. Uh, it has changed the 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 intensity of of hiring, the pace at which we hire. Process that we go through, um, and and just the pure volume of it, you know, and uh, so. You know, Mina Baslik and Johnny Gosh and and uh. Sue Ledger at SAU, and then the building level staffs have done really well. you know, Mina Baslik and Johnny Gosh and, and uh Sue Ledger at SAU, and then the building level staffs have done really well of, of getting there. Right now, currently, we have a special education teacher in Amherst, Harris. Uh throughout the, the district that, you know, we have some openings, figuring out what to do there and some recess monitors, so we're in pretty good shape. Uh, appreciate that. Uh, second thing I wanna update you guys on is the mentoring program, the second year mentor program and what that looks at. We're, we're excited about this, I, I think this is good educational business. Um, and so uh Steve's been kinda working a little bit with the AEA and, and on that, and you wanna give an update?
It really, it, it came from, um, I really appreciate uh Mike, like we can join him for some exit interviews. We, we did some exit interviews with some people that we anticipated being longer in the profession, longer at Amherst Middle School, Amherst uh school district, and so based on the feedback that we got through the exit interviews, we felt additional support, so the second is, is probably not uh designed for a twenty-year veteran who comes in here for year two, it's really designed for the ziers, you know, the first and five year, making sure we're supporting them with a second year of real instructional strategies, classroom management strategies, um balanced life strategies. And so we think with the second year, we may be able to retain and, and, and impact um newer teachers from filling the job. And get lots of cooperation, collaboration with the E A, uh the mentoring program was a real, uh, the, the current mentoring program was a real strong partnership between AEA and uh ASD and S A U thirty-nine, so having, having an extended mentoring program, which is the second year, for those, you know, one to three, or now it'll be two to four, two to five in the profession, we think is a way, we hope we can retain and increase their effectiveness and feeling fulfillment of the job.
Funding for that?
So um the funding, it really comes through, it comes through personnel, it comes through the seniors to them.
Does A A pay anything for that?
No. I appreciate it.
I'm assuming that
No, no, you're doing great, love it, love it. Because it's meetings, so um the original meetings, the first year is a lot about induction and culture. And this is gonna be more about instructional strategy, use classroom management strategies, fulfillment and balance. And so uh they won't repeat the same meetings that they had, so uh they'll focus on the relationship between the mentor and um maybe some, some, some real design instructional strategies for people who are maybe struggling with it.
Is the mentor like a one-on-one kinda mentor and is it assigned and it's lasting for the full year?
Thanks, Stephen, and uh we also have a, a local critical shortage, um with a square digital learning specialist. Um, we've been kinda working together, uh as we kinda bring on a, a digital learning specialist. They need to be on a site-based learning plan, but for that, we need to declare a local critical shortage. And uh Steve's been working with professional, with Christine Lambourne on, on this, so you wanna say anymore?
Sure, and I appreciate Tom's memory, we had to do this for, for Scott LaShure, who was our digital learning specialist.
Yeah.
Um, it took me a while, that's not very quick today, but I appreciate the memory. So as I say, digital learning specialist is a um, it's not for some reason, uh I mean, it's a very seldom achieved credential, it's not on the statewide critical shortage area, cause so New Hampshire RSA says we can declare a local, once we declare a local, that's eligible for a site-based learning plan. Um, this is Megan Merle, who, right, remember that we, um, she moved from the classroom, cause we had a retirement uh into this position, and so because she is a teacher, she's automatically eligible for a site-based learning plan for this credential. Uh, and this will be, actually, I've been here three years, this is my, it'll be my third time working on the digital learning specialist site-based learning plan. Um, we have, so it's a, we have a lot of educational opportunities for Megan, and she can work with Scott, who's at the middle school, who's in this process.
And this essentially allows them to get the credential for the digital learning specialist while they work. Cause we brought in Scott, honestly, from Arizona last year, where he was qualified there, but just didn't have the New Hampshire qualifications.
Perfectly said, you have an excellent memory.
I love that, Steve.
Yeah, he's from Arizona, he's a great man. He's all set, he has his interim license, he now has three years to gain the credential, then he goes to beginning educator license, then he goes to experience educator license, but he's doing great.
Okay, so what happens, are there benchmarks they have e- every year to be able to continue on this?
So we put together, so once that we have the critical shortage, then she, uh, she's able to get the same eligibility. And then we put together a plan that has to be approved by the state, there are competencies listed to get this credential, there are certain things that the candidate has to demonstrate learning, that can be through coursework, it can be through observation, it can be through independent study, it can be through um, they, they really like coursework and professional, uh, adoptive professional development. Um, and once they have the plan approved, they have three years, um, we encourage them to get it done within two. Cause you don't wanna be on the last year, cause something could happen, so typically they get them done within the second year. And then they have full credential and um they just work through the regular professional.
Terry?
Would this be taking Yeah.
You got it.
Well, honestly, she didn't start that way, she was a classroom teacher and moved over into it, and I don't remember whether she had the credential before or after, but Exactly, I think it's a pretty common pathway.
So we'll have to take a motion to declare a local critical shortage for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for the digital learning specialist. Terry with motion.
Hey, second.
Jason, any further discussion or questions?
I wanted to vote for this, this is like an exception, saying normally you would be able to hire someone that had a credential. Voting for saying, we, we approve you hiring someone without the credentials.
Because we can't
And they will learn, they'll get the credential during the work period.
So, but this is declaring a local critical shortage area, that's it. That allows, we submit that to the state and that allows eligibility for S O E, and so it's second tangentially, it allows to be S O E, but today you're just approving local.
So if we don't approve this, that is a knocking building, you're saying you can't find someone with credentials?
Exactly.
And this is a position at, just at Wilkins then?
Yeah, I don't think it's Clark. And I mean, I'll say that uh, then I'm sad to see um this morally phenomenal teacher, and I know that she'll do whatever she has to do to make this good, kids.
Well, she's a more student this way, cause now she works with all of them.
Yeah.
Still, I, I echo you, Jason, I had the same thought, oh, she's such, she's so great in the classroom, and then I talked myself into it, but now I get to see all the students and all kids, so um, yeah, I, I have no doubt in her ability to achieve the, the standard.
With teachers to follow in her passions, if this passion is taking her, this is where it lives. So we know we are a relentless teacher.
Any other discussion points, questions? Okay, all in favor? Three, four, five, and none opposed, so that will pass, you have your local critical shortage.
Thank you very much, and the last thing under personnel, uh you see in board notes and in Trello, four names uh that were provided to the board uh since the, the last meeting. Uh, just hoping that we can get a motion to, to approve the slate of of educators, uh you have a couple specialists, B C B A, learning specialist and assistant principal and, and a math teacher. Uh, but as mentioned, this was, you know, um sent out to the board since the last meeting. So it's like getting a nomination to prove this slate of teachers.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh slate of nominees as presented.
Okay, okay, a second. Shannon, any further questions? Any questions from Mike, or if it, anything specific, we may have to go to non-public, but if there are any generic questions? Okay, seeing none, oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm sorry, I, I didn't think I did, and now I knew. Um, I just wanna confirm that the one that is the assistant principal, this is the one that is intended to be primarily located at Clark.
Yeah, foundation.
Just making sure, okay, thank you, my other question.
Alright, all in favor of the slate as presented and as not a motion by Jason? Two, three, four, second? We did uh Shannon, sorry, thank you, I didn't, I didn't announce it, Shannon second, I know that, so now we can call the vote and all five are in a favor of that. Saw it, just didn't recognize it, so thank you, great. Okay, so staffing complete, we will go on to our next item tonight, which is under board goals, so this is always a, a very nebulous conversation that we have, I would like to keep it focused tonight, we had a, a good start to this breaking it up in the last meeting where I was unfortunately absent, Shannon, Shannon did a great job of, of attracting the note, or piling the notes, I should say, and getting us on track for this, so I will open it up, Jason and Greg had sent over some ideas. Uh, I had some different ideas as, as well, but I think uh the main thing here is to keep these fairly simple and keep them focused, I don't think we need to have a tremendously large number of them. Uh, and I think our goal overall is to go back to the framework of progress that Mike has set up here and really supporting what the administration, what Mike is trying to do in the district, so with that, uh are there any comments on the original goals that we had in terms of literacy, math, instructional time, uh community partnerships, those are kind of the main areas of focus, and obviously facilities was the uh, was the, the third one, so any any overall comments on that, anything that we saw in those draft goals that we wanna change, wanna get rid of, anything we wanna fine tune?
Very awesome, yeah, look at my email, but, yeah, more time on that than Okay, so on the, on the draft rule under journal time, I have two clarify questions. First, one is on the one called organizing a facility plan that factors in maximum for instructional time during the day. I don't know what that means, but, but, talking about walking between classes, they're talking about facility, how, what does that do, what does the facility have to do with for instruction? Anyone know what that means?
Do we know what we added that last time? So the way that I interpret that, Greg, is that this is a, as we talk about a new building, uh and I think one of our biggest uh in the new building, if you have a gym and you have a multipurpose room and you have a cafeteria, you are able in theory to have multiple places where you're able to do gym class and lunch at the same time, whereas you're restricted on that now. So in theory, if you can do gym and lunch at the same time, you're not having to rotate everybody through individually, this opens up additional time during the day to be able to have uh extra math or extra science or extra literacy work. Uh, I, I, keep me, tell me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I think that, or Mike, I think that that's the goal, is when you're able to start spreading out some of these other things and doubling up on time and not restricted by your gym space and your gym class routine, it dictates the pace of everything else, you're able to do a lot more with some of that educational time. Granted, you're not adding three hours a day, but you're at least able to free up an extra twenty to thirty minutes a day, uh and over the course of a week and months, that starts to add up.
Is that what it means, N P R, utility, does that mean?
I think that's just part of it, that's the first thing that my mind went to, are there other?
Yeah, I, I highlighted it, I was the one guilty of highlighting it, cause I, I anticipated a little bit of conversation, so Tom, to your point, when, when I read that, you know, I read, you know, think of kind of what you said, like if you have spaces where you don't have to share and you have spaces that are available for you to use, there are different things that you can do with your, your time. Um, I think what you'll see uh in, in school that maybe, you know, maybe wasn't present in, in, in years past, just cause it wasn't a common practice was, there's a lot of time where you need more spaces for a small group and you need more spaces for tier two or tier three type of interventions. And so when I read that, that's kinda what, what I think it is, so you have your tier one whole group, whole class stuff, but then you have the ability to pull people out, and I think as we look at designing our facilities, you know, the ones we currently have, and then ones that we potentially might have, you know, keeping something like that, you know, in, on the forefront will be important, I'm not sure it's necessarily like a, like a board or, you know, for, you know, a center or uh um, it could be something on, you know, a list for us to keep in mind as we work. Um, but, you know, that's why I kinda, kinda highlight that, I feel funny, board in, you know, Steve, you have any thoughts on, on that particular?
No, I think you're right on, there's no question that new designer for the facility will make instruction time in and out of school, time between classes.
I guess it kind of, it go down to blue paragraphs, there's this paragraph, the board is committed to maintaining safe, appropriate, comfortable learning environment for students, staff, community, I think what you're saying can be captured in that sentence, maybe we can strike the first highlighted one from the instructional time, it's really important with facilities than instructional time.
I would agree.
I agree, I have the same point on the, the next one, um, oh, see Tom's first one, um collaborate with administration, building leaders on programming, scheduling, the impact on, on instructional time.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you there, I think uh, you know, uh, it, it, it does fit in you know, the value of the community, and, and if you look at, you know, how we're scheduling, that's something that we are, are very interested, you know, you hear Steve talk about uh, time is the currency of education, uh we talked quite a bit about how we use time and, and where we, you know, want to have, yeah. We use time in, in, in what we ask students to do with their time during the school day as we build a master schedule. And uh, I will say, building a master schedule at all levels is very cumbersome, complicated, lots of moving parts. Uh, it's hard to, if you're not in it, to understand how to develop a master schedule. Um, and that does some of the things that we wanna do, but I do think you capture the essence of that highlighted point uh under the facility piece, but also I, I saw it up there with uh the communication of value instructional time as well, so I think they're both there, you know, and, and I think based on framework, as it's communicated to building level administrators, you don't need that because they're, they are already gonna be pretty committed for that, and it fall under your, your other two there.
A question on that was, um, does that also include start times and possible universal start?
So I think eventually that could, depending on where the conversation goes, but for this particular school year, because I don't think we're there yet, you know, it's not, it, it wouldn't include that, but you know, Greg, moving forward later, I do think you know, a, a, a start time could be considered of, of how to use time effectively when building, that could have changed it.
Right.
Right, and I'll give you an example, like there's there's an example and I'm not gonna do that, but I can tell you after, alright, and, but there's a way to kind of play with some things that we have here.
Can we rephrase this then, so, so right now it says scheduling and the impact on instructional time, I think you say scheduling on the impact of instructional time, that's what you say in that.
Larry?
Um.
I think it just went away.
Thank you.
I might have deleted it.
Leading's fine, but it's like, yeah, so the um, but Tom is now I mean
Cause again, I, I think
Right.
No, but I think
But, but the elaborate administration, that's, that's all saying.
I think for us, it's reviewing policy and then, and determine using the next year to look at contract negotiations as they come up to say, these are the items we need to focus on to be able to increase instructional time, those are the areas where we can make an impact policy and instructional time, and then obviously whatever Mike and the administration say, hey, we wanna try this, they're gonna bring stuff to us and we're gonna say, hey, but I think it's a great idea, or maybe, you know, just to bounce ideas off us, I think that's where our job is for that, but I don't think we need to be telling them you need to cut five minutes of this class, there are things that middle school schedule, everybody knows about this that we talked about, but it's not my purview to, to mandate that. But when Mike comes and says, this is what we're looking to do, I think we can just provide a, a, an ear and, you know, any other suggestions.
I, I know, I'm right there with you, I think that's exactly the relationship between building administration, superintendent, and board.
Wanna believe it then?
Yeah, so I think the two items that are there, communicating the value of instructional time, this is something that I've tried to do the last couple of years in, in the negotiations that were voted down in twenty-three, and then the ones that were passed again in twenty-four. Uh, and that, that really was the focus of negotiations, and then again, reviewing, alright, we've done this with negotiations, adding a day in our second year of the contract, which is this year, but what's going to be the focus after next year, when we start to have those conversations again with teachers for the next A E A and A S S A contracts, cause they'll come up again. A year from now, we'll have to start prepping for those negotiations. But I think that's where our, our focus should be, Shannon?
Yeah, I agree with that, and I also like, what I would like with the goals, what my hope is for us as a board with the goals is that anything that we're putting on here will be items that we will be talking about and engaging with in each of our meetings, right, so not every one of these things at every meeting, but that we're engaging with it throughout the year, so that this meeting next year, we can look back and do uh kind of a postmortem and an accountability check um of, of how we did as a board, right? Because that's where I think we need to elevate as a board to, okay, we're setting these goals, but the meaning was if we're not engaging with them at every meeting, if they're not driving our agendas, and if we're not then checking them at the end of the year. So I wanna keep them, I don't wanna overthink them, right, like I don't want there to be so many that we can't effectively do that, I, I would like to simplify them, so I, I guess that was a long way of saying I really like what we've done with instructional time, it mirrors the framework, um communicating the value of Um, communicating the value of instructional time. If we're engaging with that piece at every meeting. That's helping to communicate the value and then it's pretty clear in the next bullet, how we as a board have that governance piece through policy and negotiations. So. I, I love the way it's currently written right now. Cause I think that's very achievable and appropriate for us. That was long-winded, so.
It's highlighted in green, so I think we're good for that one. I just highlighted that, so that's, that can be a firm goal that we have. Those are, it's achievable things, measurable things. If we go back to the top, I want to focus on the academic goals. I know we wanted to talk about this, that was something that came up in the report speech. So I think for us. I think it's important, uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm struggling for how we want to word this. We want to support the administration and pursuing the. Tracking in the, the, but how about this? We want to support literacy and math achievement and growth. But I don't know that we're the ones that set the metrics for this. So I'm not sure where our goal, what our job. Where our job lies in there, other than maybe it's for instructional time. We have to again, talk about the value of this for instructional time, but. Whatever resources they need to be able to track and monitor this. I don't know if we're setting the benchmarks for this. I know we're supporting you for this, Mike. I'm not sure. This is where I struggle for this, but it is an important thing for us to be able to work with them to track it. But again, we're not the ones that should be saying, oh, you need to look at this test, this test and this test, and these are the markers you need to follow. I don't know if that makes any sense, but.
But we could do that. We, we could, we, we, now we can go both goals for the board, right? We could make a separate company about. Goals for superintendents off.
It's one thing, I mean, in some ways they're, they're one and the same, right? We want to support.
Right, but say like, but we, we, we don't have control over the tests. We can say, we want you to. You know, meet this level of the, of these tasks like that.
Mike has a goal of eighty percent proficiency in math and sci- uh, literacy, so right? That was the number you threw around.
Yeah, I, I think ultimately we want to get to eighty percent, but you know. We want to have growth every year. You know, and then I think in the framework, B data says, you know, look to have growth every year, but with the goal outcome of eighty percent.
That, that's a standardized testing, eighty percent.
Yeah, that's maybe based off, uh, SAS.
Thought there was a, yeah, I'm not a lawyer, but I thought there was an essay that says something like. Every student has to be proficient in the grade level. And I understand that there's not a single district in the state that's applying for that, I think, but um. Is that, is that true? Yeah, I think you know that either family is remembering it, but.
Well, no child left behind. Fast bike.
Thousands of, yeah.
That made the goal, everybody. Sir.
Okay.
Right, that, that's the achievement.
Okay, so eighty percent is something that you want to achieve this year, Mike, or is that something you want to achieve?
Yeah, so the way we worded it, because like I said, you know, earlier in the meeting, like in some pockets we have, we're there, right? But we'd like to be. Um, you there consistently. So the way we were in the framework was increasing the percentage of students who demonstrate proficiency or above. On the state assessment by ten percent with the ultimate goal of being eighty percent of all students achieving at that. You know, we think that ten percent growth.
Right, okay.
So, and that could be like, hey, you might have grade.
Ten points, you're saying ten points?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, oh, but seventy percent now, does ten points mean eighty percent?
Ten percent.
So you have seventy points or?
Seventy seven, right? They're at fifty and they go fifty-five, right? And so, and then when we create our data presentations, you can kind of see. You know, how we are measuring that and how we're monitoring that.
Cool.
So.
Okay, then I read Tom, that's my big question.
So Jason, what, you had thoughts on this? You shared an email, uh, with me just as a, as a touch point on this. So how, as a, as an educator yourself. What are your thoughts on this? How do we, how do we word this that we're, you know, we're helping them examine the.
Yeah, I mean.
Establish the tests here. So what is our?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying. If you're saying like, it's not really for us to dictate, which I'm not saying, I'm not trying to dictate.
But it is for us to share the results of it.
Yeah, not, yeah, I mean, I would like to see, I, for me, I'd just like to see whatever the metrics are that we have a conversation about those metrics and I would almost like to see like, uh. What kind of like this is. You, you know, like, these are the metrics, here's where the growth was, or wasn't in.
And I think, and I think when you go back to the, to the goals that you guys are, were discussing.
I mean, here's my, my big thing. And I know this might be my own personal bubble, but I would also like to see, and I think I've already heard it, uh, today from, uh, Mike and Steve. Make sure that we're not, and we also have some mobile data included as part of. Yeah, I'm, I'm a portfolio kind of guy. I know that's a little, some say that's antiquated, but still, I still like the portfolio idea. So really, really zero in on where the growth is or isn't and.
Yeah, so when you look at the literacy goals, um, you know, and, uh, and you look at the math goals, you know, something to me would. That, you know, the assessment data we monitor, track and share with the board. Through the SA thirty-nine data dashboard that indicates multiple, multiple data points, right? And you guys are going to, to get that, you're going to get that in July, right? And, uh, and you might get a version of it in October. Uh, once, you know, we finalize the comps, I'll be comparing state level and then other, other places. That's the Amherst and I see you thirty-nine like to compare themselves too. So there'll be multiple presentations during the, the year on this, so.
I guess my, my only, my only feedback and concern about that, I think I've said before. And I know this is going to be an unpopular statement with some people. I don't care what other districts are doing there. Is to always provide, it has a conversation before, right? The complete whole child. All academic and we're trying to do this holy grail thing and the other districts might not be. Doing that. So I just, that's my own two cents. I'm not sure how helpful, or, you know.
So it's only reflective of what people in the community think too. Is it people in the community that's one of their, and I've been as guilty of this as anybody, when they start to look at. Costs and they start to be looking at other districts and be like, well, why are we, again, it's a very. It's a different way of thinking. It may not be an entirely accurate portrayal, but it is public perception. So it's, uh. They have, they sell attention to it.
Yeah, and I think moving forward, what you'll see from us is to Jason's point, we are very much concerned with our student outcomes and our students' goals. And we, you know, making sure that the experience and the outcomes are where they need to be based on our value system and, you know. And this desire to improve and have more growth, right? And so I think you're always going to see an emphasis on that. But to Tom's point, I think that's, you know, reflection of the value of the communities that we live in. And, uh, trust me, I would love to be able to change the narrative a little bit. So, you know, we're so comfortable with how we're performing and how we're growing that. We're okay because it's a reflection of what people value here and they're good, right? And right now, when I see this, you know, they're saying there's. You know, based on all the conversations I've had, there are people in this community, educators and non educators, parents with children who go to the school and. Community members without children. There are a number of people that think we can perform better. Academically in, in regards to effectiveness data, right? That is a reality. And so I think our presentations will reflect to your point, but also respect. The opinions in, 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 in the desires of community members from the legislature, because you have to, right? So. Oh, I'm sorry, Shannon.
No, you're fine. Yeah, so I, I think. I think the impulse to compare to other districts is because there's been a void of. Information presented in a consumable way to, so when you said something, I meant a moment ago, you said report card. Right? Which I think is the direction we're heading with the dashboard. So I think when we give our community. These are our expectations. And I think what you're saying is let's make sure we're really clear on them because our expectations aren't just SAS data. Right? We, we have other, and you know. And emissions for, for our students. That, that was probably not the best phrasing of that, but you know, we, we're interested in that and we want to see that growth in that area, but we also want. You know, to do all of these other things. So let's capture that in the dashboard or a report card. And then year over year, we can very clearly report back to our community. This is what your tax bill is, this is how our students are doing. And Mike says something often that I really appreciate and that's data is data, right? There's going to be, there will be years where. We're knocking it out of the park and there may be a year where we look at that report card or that dashboard and say. Oh, we, we have a, you know, people say we have a problem here or there. Um. So I, I, I really like keeping, I, I want to talk more about it, I guess, about how, what other information we need to share because I do think sometimes. What I've experienced as a community member is the impulse to look at other districts because I'm not seeing any of that information out front here, but I think. I think you made a lot of progress in this last year, helping to fill that void. So how can you keep expanding upon that?
Okay, so I've changed, I gotta go, Greg. The little thing on the email I sent was, um. Probably to add a goal to, um, talk about. Being off effective, um, kind of a flexible chance getting at, I think maybe Jason as well. We don't, we don't know how to convey that we're spending the money well, like what is the best? Unit for that, the cost of student, we've heard a lot of people say, no, there's the exception, why it's not right. I'd like to get to some idea that. We can say to people, here's the cost effective number and we're underspending, we're overspending, we can cut back or we can reduce our time. I currently don't know how to tell people if we are overspending or underspending. I don't know if anyone else here does it either. I'd like to at least try to get to a point where we can say. And they, maybe it's parallel, maybe it's parallel with people, I don't know. It's not, but. What is that number? I think we should get, I think we should know what that is. How do we know if we're being responsible or the other? We can't just say we're not getting what we want or we're, I feel about saying too much, we have to know. You know, what is cost effective look like? So I don't know what that number is, but I'd like to make that, that's a goal to, um. Get to a, create some way to figure out what cost effectiveness looks like and determine if we're underspending or overspending. Not ignoring, do we have, now I need between two dots, zero, so. Want to type it in myself?
Anybody else have feedback on, on that idea?
I struggle with that. It's typing that in as a goal at the moment because I think that that is very subjective. Um, I think it depends on what you value, right?
But does that go back to the academic piece of this as well? We're trying, you know, how do we rank and compare academic progress when our values make a difference in how we're planning? I think it falls at that same.
Yeah, I know, I, I'm not.
We have value.
Have an answer.
We have value in our community. It is different what we have values, we have costs. So is our, is our spending achieving what we value?
How would you write that as a goal? I'm not against it. I'm just.
I'd like to, I don't, I don't, about this year, I'm not trying to optimize that. My period of finding, find out what it is. So is it point three times SAS score plus attendance squared time, you know, so what is it? Let's get to it and then we have a thing. Look, here, here's the degree two, it makes sense for these reasons. And we're underspending, we need to raise, raise funds. Or we, we're overspending, we're going to cut funds and here we're going to cut. Like they have some story that says why the money we're spending is spent well, that's. Maybe, maybe, maybe we don't do a metric, maybe we don't put it in, maybe we said. Create a narrative, so it's not just a number and say create a narrative that expresses. That this district is. He being effective or ineffective in its spending.
Is it any different than we did at the budget cycle last year though, when the budget passed? I feel like here, if your budget passes and ours passed by a fairly comfortable margin, isn't that? The way of, aren't you effective in telling that story?
Cause I, raising funds, when you, when you pass a budget, it's money yet to be spent. You're, 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 you're telling a story, you made a sale. But you haven't spent the money wisely yet, right? So maybe you're saying it, it's reflective of the previous year's spending, which I probably is true. If I would give you more money if you weren't spending well last year. Um, I, I just don't have a good way of knowing that. And it's interesting that I don't, because like, if it was a, if it was a, you know. Private school or a business, I might have an easier way of knowing that, but the public school is very complicated and it's hard to know. How we're doing and it would go compared with parent public schools too, which always bothers me. It's like, you're not comparing education as a whole, right? What? What does it say that this is more effective, less effective than other educational modes as well? I mean, I think there's a lot of value in group school. I've talked a lot. That I, I think a lot of value in the, in the system that. People are getting it, wouldn't get elsewhere, but how do we communicate that? We're not doing it. I don't have a story. I thought about it. Quite a bit more isolated, but I like to have a goal for the board to say, we're, we're taking thirty million dollars. Out of the town, we're, we're spending it, it's being spent well.
I mean, you could. That's a desire. Now I hear what you're saying, like, you know, so for me, you know. You want to have hallmarks, an effective school district or school. There are areas that you outline and say, hey, we know we're effective if we are doing these things. I can tell you in my experience as an educator, they don't make a. They, I've never experienced a, a, a number into that, like they, you create, like, hey, here's the hallmarks. Here's the data that we value and it could be staff absenteeism, it could be attendance, it could be. Sports, it could be participation, it could be SAS, you know, it could be how many kids. From eighth grade to ninth grade, don't go to BG or other private schools, right? You design your story and then. You know, if people like the story, or what Tom was saying, they'll support budgets. So actually there are people who will say, if your budgets are passing consistently. The community and, and the task area must be comfortable with. The product, the experience, the outcomes they're getting because they're supporting. And but we also have these other data points that we can measure a little more easier than what you're saying, but I've just never experienced that. Uh, so I think that this goal is, if you want to have a goal for the board and therefore the superintendent. To help work with you to determine, you know, how do we, you know, measure our effectiveness? As, as an Amherst school district, I think that's, that's, that's valid. And I'm going to say this and I'm going to be really careful. That does kind of get into some medium term and long term planning. So if you spend a year kind of looking at that a little bit, maybe that's part of the, the story as you get a little closer. So I hear what you're saying and, and, and if you're saying what I'm thinking you're saying. It's not done exactly the way you're in public education, like I don't have a person I can go get that from. But we can say, all right, these are the hallmarks, here's where we want to, you know, measure that if we're good, right? And so. I think putting something in there to, to say, hey, we're going to. Research, we're going to work towards defining what's, you know. Educational experience looks like, that's acceptable by the community or values reflective of the community. I think if something like that, I think that's doable with a board. Right? And it does set you up for a little bit more of some other things. And I do think that it's already happening. So what you're asking for is already happening behind the scenes, you know, and really not even behind, you know, it's happening. So I think that's how I would phrase it, Tom.
Right, I want to create a goal to determine cost effectiveness of the Amherst school district.
That's how I'm going to, that's how I was the metrics and hallmarks to the, uh, metrics and hallmarks to find Amherst school district that's effective, efficient school district, cost effective. Well, it's not just profit, I want profit included, but I think it includes all markers of it. I mean, we can be cost effective, including costs. We can be cost effective, but what's our investment? What, what is our, to your, your point you made a minute ago. We're going to multiply SAS scores times point three to equal a dollar. So what's cost effective? Is it? Every student that, we have to have a hundred students that score eighty percent efficiency or else we're, we only get seventy-nine, then we're, we spend too much on.
I, I want to figure out what that is this year. That's all. Figure out what is meaning to be cost effective for Amherst school. Otherwise, real, I mean, how, I, I don't know what you guys think about when you're voting on these, these measures like these tonight, but that's what I'm thinking about, honestly. How is this really the best use of funds that we, we pack? People voted for the budget, but we tack people for, for these different funds. That weren't needed for the budget and now we're spending it. I'm thinking this better be cost effective and I think a lot of things are, so that's why I voted yes, right? But that's what I think about this. I don't know how you guys think about it, but. I would like to have a more of a board view on that, like this is a good use of money. That's. And it sounds really simple, but that's kind of where I would like to get to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you at all that as a board, we have a, a responsibility to set. Responsible budgets, um, that meet the needs of our students. I think the needs of our students change depending on the students that walk through the door, so to, to. to say there's this one number, like, I don't know if you're trying to get out of number, right? Like, with the calculation you said earlier. I, I guess where I'm struggling is, I think there's, there's a place in our goals for fiscal responsibility. I don't know that we are going to be able to honestly be able to give our community a, and this is the number that makes us a cost effective, right? Like, so maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I mean that, that, all that equation, actually, that equation says, there's all, all these things. Like, this is the, I think this is the Venn diagram of cost effectiveness and if we're spending, you know, we're effective here, we put twenty on this, we're not getting results, we're putting too little here, we need to either move where we're spending or increase funding or decrease taxation. I'm trying to get to the equation eventually, but this year I'd like to get to a narrative, at least. So I think what Mike was suggesting is, is fine, with Tom red is gray, I just want to see.
Or is, or like, yeah, I wanna say it, tradition, cost efficient is essentially, to me, it's the same thing. So the board will establish the metrics and hallmarks it takes to define Amherst School District as an effective, cost efficient operation. And I think if we look at this, we're gonna find points in here where it's going to be impossible for us to determine this. For example, I think of busing right at the top, we are not cost efficient in busing because we can't be, because our town is too spread out and we all go busing to every single.
I don't agree with that statement though, like.
When we have buses that are forty percent, fifty percent full or thirty percent full in the morning.
But that's what it costs, so, so there's no cheaper way to pick up those twenty students in the morning than that is.
There might be.
Then not go to the station.
We don't flip start times.
Okay, that's a good thing to.
So that's, that, so I'm, I'm all for it, so I just think we're gonna find these areas where it's gonna take more than just anyway, I, if we're fine with that as a goal, uh.
There are actualities, but I'd like to try to capitalize on what we, we can internalize.
Sure.
So. What I, what I think I hear you saying, and what I, and where I hear that there's a little bit of this, when you try to put it into a I'm gonna spit this in and I'm gonna get this out is a very simple thing and we're all saying it's not, right? And that's why you're hearing pushback. But what I, what I think that is a core of what you're saying is, and what we've been talking about for several years now, we'll continue to talk about is how we communicate with our, and how we communicate with each other and how we're able to. I think we've made some improvements in our budgeting process overall, and we've gone to true zero based and we've done some things that we can point to and say, hey, this is a very simple thing to point to that is black and white, to say, we have a better process to get a better outcome. And so that's something that is easy to communicate. There are some other things that are more nebulous and are a little harder to, to quantify. And you're saying on those harder to quantify, let's find some kind of metric so that we can say, here's why we still think we're being good stewards of your, of your funds. And so what I really, what I really see this one as, is it communicationful? Is for us to decide how do we effectively communicate? Because we've already done some of those things, like our budgeting, that is a process that we've improved. This is maybe not so much a process per se, but keeping high in mind that whatever we do, we have to be able to explain it. And we have to be able to say, why do we feel like that was a good way to spend the money? What was a good way to do it? And were we keeping this in mind when we did that? So it's more of a communication goal. If I.
Yeah, I think that's probably right. It's, it's understanding how to communicate and what to communicate.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I, if you, I've heard your, um, explanations over the last couple of years and I haven't been convinced personally, and if I need a point where I can be convinced, or I can go out and say, this is a cost effective budget because I have no speech right now.
Yeah, so, so I, I think that if, I would become more than as a goal if we look at it as a communication. We look at it, and I think the word.
In the community section, I think we should go, yeah, community partnership section.
Well, I could go there, but I, I do think that the language here, like, like captures that, that we're saying, hey, we wanna figure out what are the things we are sharing, how are we, but I think that it does bear in mind to what Shannon was saying as well, that when we're going, we're bringing these on the agenda, we're we're doing these in a way that we are effective, right? We say, okay, remember, we wanted to make sure that we can communicate things well, we wanted to make sure that we're being efficient and that we can prove we're being efficient, we wanna have, so all of these should be things that we are using as touchstones for any other decisions that we make. And then when we make a decision, then we have a way to communicate. So I think that I, I wish it were super simple and I wish there was a way to have like here in that equation, and unfortunately, I don't think that's possible. But I do think it is possible to say, just like we've made improvements in the overall process that we knew were necessary, that we can look at other areas and as we, as we approach new things, this is something that we always keep in mind is how are we gonna communicate this and how are we going to prove, um, whether it be a soft sort of metric or, or a hard number, how are we gonna communicate that this was the right way to go? And so I, I, I am fully in support of that as a concept. And I think that the language that we have pulled together is something that can support that concept.
Notion of trying to determine the cost of adequate education, I think there's two losses going on that right now. When I started this business, I was in clerical one, clerical two, so in Hampshire, trying, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but the courts haven't figured out what the cost of. Yeah, it just is a very.
That, that's on a top level, that, I'm aware of the part cases you're talking about, it's like a cost per student number. What I'm talking about is, is that even the right method to think about? Do I look at that or do I look at something much more complicated? Um, because cost per student doesn't have anything to do with outcomes, it just has to do with bodies and, and dollars and it's like just cause you're throwing, you can throw a million dollars to students, it doesn't necessarily mean anything, you're getting, you're getting, you're getting on life, right? You're spending that, that, um, inefficiently. But I'm saying if, if I have twenty thousand per student or five thousand per student, am I spending it efficiently, spending it well? And that, I think, is needed to kind of bring a little more cohesion to our community and I think it'll you know, more cohesion would, would help a lot of things in our district in terms of getting budgets passed, getting more support, avoiding some of the things that you're seeing with distracted, other public distractions you're seeing from your members. So I think my goal in this is to create the communication route and story that sort of bring people together and, and we have a story that says, here's the value you express and we are taking, our outputs are a lot of your values and we're minimizing the costs in accordance to the actual realities of the students, not gonna be zero, not gonna be nothing. That make sense for me?
That's okay. Sorry?
So in building strength and partnerships, I would like to add bringing back the Amherst Citizens and Schools, um, program. Is something that we started right in the year before COVID and we we sort of talked about trying to revive it this year, but we didn't, we didn't take any, um, steps as a board to make that happen, that, that on a school level, they absolutely did things that were, were actually very popular and very effective. Like bringing seniors in to read with kids and do that, so I would like as a board for us to revive our part of that and to help lead an effort along with administration and, and each of the school and some of the community, um, partnerships that we're already talking about, talking to more often anyway, to revive that as a specific program to bring our citizens in, to spend time with our, you know, to make good use of what we have available to us, right? Um, of volunteers and people who bring them in to bring their talents and time and, and see our schools at their best with students and staff in them, right? And work with us. So, um, look for opportunities to collaborate. So I think that as a formal program, I would like to have this revived. And I would be happy to chair that or, or co-chair and, and be part of that, that was something that we even have a little Facebook group and a logo and everything that it was student created and I would, I would like, I think it would fit in well with trying to expand our partnerships.
So I love the citizens in schools, I, I just wonder, I feel like it's more effective and achievable, like I love what Dr. Murphy did at Wilkins this year, bringing the, the lunch group, but I just don't know, I'm trying, trying to understand what our role as a board would be in that program.
I think it would be to act as, as a liaison between the different interested parties who might be willing to come in and with ideas and being able to match those things up, because sometimes we have to give permissions for things or sometimes we have to, you know, they have to go through, are they frequent volunteers or they not? So it's just trying to show a very visible support for and putting an umbrella around that to say, this is something that we are dedicated towards, is really strengthening, getting people beyond just parents, because parents is great, but we also want grandparents and kids and people who don't have kids in school and retirees, we have far more people in our community without children in our schools and paying taxes than actually have children benefiting directly from our schools. And we want to bring them in and find ways to say, how can you interact with our students, how can you interact with our school? That they can bring us again, your time and talents and expertise. We have them on committees, we have them on other things, but looking for opportunities to make those connections.
Yeah, I, I get to a chance, what roles the board have, unless we have a subcommittee to determine that.
Well, I almost wonder, so right now our under build strength and, and build and strength and partnerships, you know, we talk, it says organizing small group or one-on-one meetings with other organizations of impact town in order to have a more town-wide collaboration. I just wonder if there's a way to tweak that goal, because I understand what you're saying that there are other groups outside of the touch of the schools, right? So there's only so much that only administrators can do to we may have contacts with it.
If I can get some structure around it, like, like looking at opportunities and having those conversations. Rather than expecting each administration to come up with their own and totally drive it on their, to, to help facilitate those conversations because it's part of this goal anyway, right? And so it's just giving it something that we can help be, give, do some leadership in.
So maybe can we add something there that just talks about citizens, um, in this, you know, impact? Let's organize a small group or one-on-one meetings with other organizations of impact in town, um, serving as liaisons to help, as a bridge to help get citizens in the school. I, I guess what I don't wanna do with this goal is put us in a box where we're driving it, because I think the organic things that happened last year within the schools, you saw the AMS fifteen celebration, that was fantastic. Uh, of course it got a lot of people in to the school, I think they're doing a lot of great things and making connections at Wilkins, so I want to just support the work that they're doing and bring ideas forward, right? I think that's what you're kinda saying or.
It is, but I think, I think that one of the things that was helpful was that we had a couple of key people in each of the schools when we started it, like its own sort of program that we were able, people had a place to go and say, what's going on, what are, what are some opportunities that might have, what are some things? And it, it gave them a place to go and see those opportunities and it gave us a way to go and have those conversations in, in just a slightly different way, right? And, and it led us brainstorm together with a very specific goal in mind. And, and then we said, okay, here's some things and we can go help socialize that out and try to get your message out and help you to expand that. So it's absolutely being a liaison and helping those conversations, but if you don't have a reason around very specifically having those conversations, then you just expect them to end verbal among all the other things going on, right? So it gives it a focus. And so I do think that we can provide a role in helping to focus and take a little bit of the little bit of the work away from administration adding one more thing, instead of saying, hey, when you have these things, we can help you get the work out, we can help you get ideas, we can go help you find some opportunities, like doing some legwork ourselves too, doing.
Yeah, but I, I mean, the legwork part of it is a goal, but I don't know that the rest of that is a goal. So Kathleen wants to do something with the selectmen and town have a civic day, then I think, you know, we could help with that, but I don't know if it's a goal for us to determine, hey, you should have a civic day in the school.
Well, no, no, and, and again, that's why the original program, and that's why I looked at it as a program, it was like, you have representatives from each school, we would get together and come up with ideas and go to and say, okay, what are ones that are worth pursuing? And then we would pursue, so it's really just giving it, and then we give a way to communicate opportunities in one, in, in it in an organized way, right? And it's getting really warm in here again, I know it's really loud when it's on.
So I, I guess my concern is we have, we have academic goals, we have instructional time, I've added facilities in there. I think that's a separate goal, the community partnerships, and we can take the facilities piece out of there. How many goals are we going to have that we can actually establish and functionally meet? Some of these are fairly sizable. Uh, I would, I would prefer Terry that, as opposed to that being a goal, maybe it's just outreach that we do the it's informal outreach, we can leverage the partnerships we're creating, you know, that we already have in there for uh, the organizing small group one-on-one meetings, I think we can leverage those and do that more informally than have it as a written goal where we're searching for these things, because I don't know that we're gonna know what's gonna fit within the school's schedule, I prefer to have the administration come to us and say, hey, we're gonna do this and then we can go, well, great, we have a weekly meeting, the selectmen, we can see what we could leverage out of that, does that make sense? I don't know.
No, I, I know, I do know what you're saying, and that's why I, I felt like that was it was kind of low hanging fruit, right? Like it already existed, it was already something that it wasn't a big time ask, it was just a way to say, hey, let's get together on a regular basis and talk about what are the things going on so we all know and we all can maybe brainstorm together, what's working, what's not, and come up with new ideas, it just gave us an opportunity to give some structure. So, so I'm not trying to add more work in any way, I just felt like it was reviving something that worked pretty well as an initial program, it just didn't have much time to get fully fleshed out.
So as I'm hearing you talk, I think this is something that the board could see this information. You know, the work that's happening in the buildings is part of the principals report and then they could, if there was an opportunity for them to take this information and, and communicate it out, organize a one-off meeting if that was a thing or, or network then to get people in on that project, I have no problem, from my perspective, being able to have that included in similar reports. That helps.
Yeah, and I'm not looking, it doesn't have to be my way or no way. That was simply something that had started to be quite successful and that wasn't a lot of extra work that I thought would be an easy way to support what we were already trying to do, right? So it's okay if you don't want to have it be as specific as that, that's fine. I just thought it was a kind of a, um, like I said, a low hanging fruit, one, to, to support one that we already have on, just adding one more line to it. But I'm totally comfortable with the stand you say.
What's the line, what's the line you wanna add to?
It's just reviving that program as, and it would, it would probably involve having a few key people that meet on a determined, regular basis, just talk about the opportunities and ideas and, because it really did help, having that collaborative time together really was helpful, because it said, okay, we're doing this over and then our line, hey, here's two, and you know, whatever, and then it's a great, I've been trying to reach out to this group that I know and in having that time to collaborate, it's kind of like the, uh, you know, like the wellness committee, right? Those things might be happening or been on their own, but when you have the opportunity to spend together, hey, this is working real well in this building, let's try it over there too, it's a different situation, but you're not gonna have that conversation if you don't set that type of side.
So what was it called? So if I could leverage these relationships to reinstitutes?
The Amherst Citizens and Schools.
So was it a committee? It, it, yes, and I'm just, I'm reluctant to add, I, I, I know, I'm reluctant to add another committee because I'm looking at all of them. I.
There's some serious.
To, that, that we have to do as a board and that our administrators have to do, that's really not that, not, but I think that's happening and I think there's an opportunity in our board meetings and with the principals.
It was gaining traction, people having a place to go to say, hey, I want to come have an opportunity and it kind of gave this for those who don't take the time to go read your.
Still do it, right? Or not having a board goal shouldn't prohibit you from doing it.
Well.
Sure. You have to get off this time and just.
I am okay with it off, I, I would just I think that revive, it was a program that did have a committee, yes, but it wasn't a heavy lift programming, you know what I'm saying? It wasn't at the same level of some of these other things. It was, it was a one step above grassroots, but it just gave the opportunity to brainstorm together and, and put ideas together and look for opportunities together. And so right now, it's happening on an individual building level and I'm just like a way to kind of make that slightly more cohesive, because I think it actually helps the effort to share together those things, but if it's happening already.
You can do that.
And I think for people finding those opportunities, it helped them have one place to go to look at those opportunities where instead, right now, let me go to our Wilkins page, let me go to an AMS page, and they go, you know, it's, it's harder to harness it together. So I'm okay, I'm making it edible, I, I, I would like us to consider if we have the bandwidth trying to revive it as, again, it's a rather informal but important thing. Because I think that things are already happening, that they're happening, it, it feels like so much more is going on each administration that already have luck. It it feels like so much more is going on each administration that already have luck.
T beam, that's the U of N order. Central point for all all things. Lives citizens and schools.
Well, I mean, I still like, we never killed the Facebook page and I still like, just as I'm sitting in this meeting, I just found a request from somebody asking to join the page, you know? It they're still finding it and looking for a place to find that kind of information. Exactly. Like I I haven't sent any to that page in two and a half years, but I still get lots of joy. For people finding it up.
I mean, I think it's a worthy conversation to have. I don't know that it rises to a board goal for me. And that's it here. And I think with the new, you know, we have a position open in the SEU right now that's for our communication person. My assumption would be that that person will have a pretty heavy role in community outreach and how we talk with the community too. So I I think. For me right now, I don't think it's a board goal at the moment, but it's a continuing, like we can keep continuing to have the conversation about.
No, that's okay. I'm okay with that.
Good. Uh, facilities, this is, I think, where uh actually uh. Facility. So I just, I just put a note on there establishing comprehensive facilities plan that focuses on an elementary school project. And then establishing and presenting a plan for the remaining phases and financing for the roofing and HVAC project that is up above, it's on the end of page one. To me, those are the two most important facility aspects right now. Uh, I think that everything else hinges upon those two things, the portables or bark on there, but. I think those are already somewhat covered in the capital uh. Capital plan that Roger has put together. Are we fine with something simple like that? I think, I don't know if we need to get any more specific with that. It's I think part of what we're gonna talk about tonight and then the HVAC improvement project and building grounds is gonna tackle once we nominate those two members.
So are you talking about striking everything underneath?
No, because the partner, the partner or community partnerships that I want to focus on is uh. The communications plan and then this is just the the idea that I had was how are we going to communicate any facilities work that we're doing? And we need to come up with bite-sized uh multimedia communications pieces that reflect. Focused uh. The focused areas or have areas of focus. So we talk about the importance of core instructional time. Now, any project that we're doing is focusing on. The impact on core instructional time, whether that's for AMS or any sort of focus project. Then we have a piece about the financing of this, we have a communication space about finance. This was. The feedback in the survey that we had was there were a lot of people that didn't know what's going on, they didn't know how it was financed. So communication really drove, what I took out of that was communication was a big area where we could improve. And so I think if we're had, we have a bunch of smaller communications pieces. That reflects finance or instruction. What are the changes? What are the alternatives? What are those four or five categories that we can create and that we can get out there? This is gonna take some work. And that's why I had Terry, I was hesitant on another committee, because we need to be able to tell the story of. What we're looking to improve with any sort of facility project that we're doing. So I think that falls in the communications piece and it incorporates core time. Um, it incorporates uh the capital needs assessment, it includes. HVAC improvements, we're willing to make air quality improvements. So what are those five or six categories that we need to put together pieces on communication? So giving everybody. One binder with eight years worth of stuff, we could say. This is the information on how it impacts for instruction. We can't say that everybody's test scores jump ten percent, but we could say that. This is what we're doing to try to make sure that we get as close to that ten percent as we can, because it's gonna improve. Uh, you know, space, what we talked about earlier, but. So to me, I think that would probably be the last one that we really have the capacity to tackle. So we have academic goals. Instructional time, facilities, and then community partnerships, defining an effective school district. And then, or sorry, building and strengthening those local partnerships and then increasing or. Creating an effective communications plan that focuses on these five or six categories from citizens.
I want to keep the, I would like to keep the goal, I'm sorry, can I speak over? I would like to keep the goal about the CIP CNA process, that last one, under facilities. Uh, just because I think that's a good goal for, we should have that as a goal and we should be able to at the end of next year, look back on the flood. That's it, that's important. I don't want to become so hyper-focused on the two really big things that we're not also doing, something that's really important.
Add that on the facilities now. So facilities on top and the bottom mark, the community partnerships, this is where I think communications piece is what we need to reflect. What we need to bring, bring up surface lists. So. I I don't, I don't want to sit here and try to wordsmith all these. Is everybody good if I just create the text for this one? We can officially vote on these on July ninth. Is there any reason why we can't do that? Because that's the last one, I think I'll I'll go over it. I don't mind, nothing by saying is the end all be all, but if I think the other ones were pretty good off, so I'll just break my community ideas. And then we can just hit on that and vote on it July ninth, we can do. So we're free?
Yeah. Then are we keeping what's below or striking what's below?
I'll I'll organize that, because some of that's already encompassed up above that too, but I want to make sure that our communications plan focuses on. A one piece of that plan focuses on how core instructional time is impacted by any sort of facility modifications that we make, whether it's. Portable enhancements or, you know, for any project that we do facilities-wise, what is the impact on core instructional time? To me, that's the most important thing. And then financing is next for that.
So I guess my question becomes. Do you want communications to be a subset of a goal or do you just want it to be its own?
That it's, to me, it's all. Under community outreach, it's it's one of three goals. We have three goals under community outreach. We have communicate, but for the school district, strengthening partnerships and then. I think communication, because it's to the community. So. Whether we move that out of that bucket or not, it's it's doesn't matter to me, but I think I I can wordsmith that, share it top with it quickly. And just hold on everything at once. All right, last item on the agenda is the actual uh building project itself. So we had our surveys, everybody's had a chance to go through and review those. Uh, just some high-level points that I saw, uh, as again, as I mentioned, one of the biggest things that I saw was there was a lack of. Uh, community knowledge, they didn't understand the, understand the plan, they didn't know what alternatives were out there. We've clearly, we've all been in the weeds in this, even Brian, you know, not even the board, you've been in the weeds to a certain extent as well. So I think we're all comfortable saying that the stuff is out there, but we just didn't do. Somehow, uh, as effective a job as we thought we did, and that's why the communications pieces for the goals came to my mind, but. Uh, seventy-two percent or some extremely or somewhat likely to vote, and seventy-two percent of those supported the project. We had fifty-nine supported it as is, fourteen percent with changes, twenty-six didn't support it at all. Uh, and then the open-ended comments, we communicated better, uh, they wanted to know what are their options we looked at, and then they wanted to know cost of. We have to keep to current buildings and then there were some. Peppered remarks there about why were the buildings not maintained over the last fixed number of years and uh. You know, we've talked about all those items at various points. So. Anybody else have any takeaways from the survey? Uh, but I think our our goal tonight, I would like to be able to. As part of the communications plan, determine what we're gonna do with any sort of welcomes project for next year, because Mike gets his communication assistant. Uh, up and running in July, this is going to be, you know, certainly a focus of that person's board and we're gonna have a lot of communications to do. So collaborating with this person is going to be uh beneficial, because whatever we do, we need to start. Talking about it in September, October and not December fifth, January fifth, April. So with that diatribe, opening monologue done, I will open. Not a diatribe, well.
I was not. A monologue. Um, my first reaction I saw the survey was that we didn't have any questions there about. Costs. And um. That was disappointing, I think, because. You know, I. If you ask people, you. You know, I have kids, right? Hey, do you want a pony for Christmas? The polls come back pretty high. You ask them, are you willing to sacrifice to pay for them and maintain them? The polls come back very different. But like some question like. How much do you want to pay for this project per year, for how many years? Just so what is our, that was our budget, it's not a budget idea. Um. That was, that was missing, I know, to the point. And then I think on the, on the results. Um. I did a quick search for. Few words in the uh. Free response section. Without knowing how many times you've heard each bullet. The word tax appeared one hundred twenty-five times. The word cost appeared one hundred and seven times, the word fund appeared forty-eight times. And in the um, there like a. Bird cloud. And it categorized the words by how common they were referenced. So the biggest. Well, common word was school, makes sense, building was second. And then third were were uh some of these words like tax, support, students, project, needs, community cost, facilities, years. Uh, so, you know, I think we missed opportunity in the survey to not gauge. The budget, not gauge how much. How many dollars are being supported? And then reading through some of the comments, there were, it's pretty obvious there were a lot of people, there were several people. In the first response that weren't Amherst residents, they said. Well, I'm a Mount Vernon resident, but I want this to pass. What does the impact of Mount Vernon? So um. You know, there's not really very um reflective, I think, of the voters that came out in in March two months ago. But you can see the results, like seventy something percent vote yes on this survey, we got fifty. Going wrong, fifty-two. Percent, I think it was fifty. Three point six one six percent voted yes on for Paul in March. So. Obviously, this, this is not really, I don't know what I learned new about this, I would have liked to see an S cost. Do it again. Like to get a gauge on how much money people, how much money people would spend. Per year, how many years for this kind of improvement they want.
And then what's the, what's the goal of that? We put together a school building project that's eighty-five dollars a year for every taxpayer, then that's what we come up with for a building?
Yeah, you make that, you make you the man.
Right, how you ask your kid how much you're willing to spend on a pony and they're gonna say eight million.
They did, they did.
But but my point is that like. I don't know if that's a valid marker, because you're just having people, I don't know what the hell the school costs. If you asked me this question two years ago, I'd spend.
Well, the question should have had something like. We we we.
People can say, hey, this is too much money.
No, you can, you didn't think in the. Questions that we asked specifically, we didn't ask him about cost, we could have asked several things, we could have asked. How do you feel about spending twenty-five thousand dollars over thirty years, twenty-five thousand dollars over twenty years? How do you feel about any? Spending one thousand dollars a year for twenty-five, you could have phrased all different kinds of ways to reflect what the what what the point, because a lot of negatives in the free response. We're about get the cost down. Well, how much do I, you want, you want the cost to be a thousand dollars a year? Down to eight hundred or down to two hundred? I didn't know what. Kind of budget I'm working with when I develop a plan, we had opportunity here, I think that was a missed opportunity. Let's see if we do a survey again. We have the analyst now. Include something about what is your cost tolerance for this kind of project?
Think. So we were instructed to have very similar questions that they've had the previous two years about the survey. The previous two years to kind of, you know, be consistent with the questions that we've been asking the community members. They they chose not to ask that particular question. However, um. Depending on what the board wants to do, there are opportunities. Through partnership with Qualtrics to do, you know, uh, another survey and and some some more folk, you know, depending on the. Questions you ask and the outcomes of those questions, you start to look at, you know, different stakeholder groups, you start doing with some focus groups to get dig in a little bit more to what you're asked. Right? Because that, those are more kind of conversations where you can kind of glean from. From from that for those people who vote like, hey, it costs too much. All right, those people cost too much. Here's an opportunity to come here and have a conversation and tell us a little bit more about. No, but, you know, our take on this particular charge of this survey was to keep it consistent with the previous surveys, but also learn. You know, some feedback on, you know, where they're at with it and then have an opportunity to have open-ended responses. To the questions where they could s- speak their their mind that they chose. Um. And so I think there's some room, depending on what the board wants to do with that, to to move forward to gather more information. Uh, you know, my my take is, you know, there's. You know, there's some debate over, you know, how much people are willing to support and and. I I'm not so sure, like asking survey questions is going to just. Close that debate, you know what I mean? I think we could get in here and say, hey, fifty-five percent of the people say it costs too much and their budget, their threshold is forty-nine point nine. And you're gonna get forty-five people saying, hey, that's still too much, you know what I mean? And and so for us, we're just gonna kind of work if we serve. And 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 work with you guys as you guys kind of grapple with this, but the. I thought the survey, you know, there's a real kind of algorithm to this, you know, and as, you know. We sat in and designed the survey with with Qualtrics, they said, hey, instead you weren't a citizen, you didn't really go too much further on the. You did get to take the whole survey, you had to, you know, and then you got that a little more open feedback and then you were done. Right? Because your opinion as a Mount Vernon resident matters, but it didn't. Matter as much as an Amherst resident, right? And so, um, and depending on how you answer. The questions, it would take you to a different question. And so um, I thought the results, we've done two surveys with Qualtrics, I think the results are. Are professionally. Gathered and and reported out. It it at the time now, we just, you know, you have that information and I can always. Do some more based off of the results and gather more stuff on on that after the Amber School, if you need me to.
Sure.
I'd like to recommend that we table. Discussion of future surveys until after we've done our more in-depth facilities work on July ninth. I would say after that, if we come away and say, hey, there's something specific we would like to go ask people about. We certainly could. Um, but I I don't think that that right now is when I want to come up with what I want my new questions to be.
So just to, so we've added a couple of things to July ninth, that was more away from facility stuff, so I don't know, we're gonna have super comprehensive. Meeting on July ninth to talk specifically to facilities. We did that back in. April, May timeframe there, so tonight was more just the vision stuff and. No, we can't talk about facilities, but.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought that it.
No, I just could have done a facilities one previously.
I understand the ninth to be just real quick, data, some visioning.
Yeah.
And then three hour.
And then touching on a couple of things we had to vote on, you know, just. Confirming the goals after we just wordsmithed, so we're not trying to wordsmith what we.
Oh, yeah, so then I would like to amend my recommendation to be tabling any future surveys at this time. And instead, as we, as we have already identified some goals of communication. As we get closer and say, what are we trying to communicate? And then we could dig into maybe some areas that we feel like. We. Need more information before, you know, how to communicate something, right? Like if we say, hey, there was an area that we saw. There was something where people said they really didn't feel like, it's like, okay, then great, here is another area we want to ask about. But I think at this point, we have what we have, it's enough for us to move forward. And and I don't think that choose your own price, I mean, it's not price line. It's not, would you be willing to stay in this hotel room if it was only fifty bucks instead of a hundred? That's not the option that we have, right? If if things cost what they cost. We feel like we've come forward with an appropriate cost. We have asked people. Do you feel like it was appropriate? And the vast majority have said. Yes, we agree with appropriate. If you said we'd like it to be less, of course, I would love it to be, I would love it to be less. I pay taxes too. Um, so I don't know that that's. A productive question per se of just choose your price and then we'll try to fit that price. I I don't think that's in my mind productive. But I do think that there may be some areas as we look into our communication plan that we say. Hey, in order to really let this be effective, are there some things we might want to know more about? So I I think we have opportunities to do further ones, but I don't know if right now would be the time to define what that's gonna be, yeah. If that makes sense.
Good. Shannon.
So looking at the comments um. This year compared to the comments that I've read over previous years. Each year, the more clarity on the plan in general. Comes up. We hear that every year. I think. That it's, you know, it's. The three years that it's been on the ballot, the project has changed each year, right? So it's been something different, something more nuanced, less nuanced, whatever, to present to the community and we try to do that in a short amount of time. I think that um, we had a better response at the polls last year. Um, than we've had previously, so I think we're getting there with the clarity piece, but I think that. We started very late last year in communicating the changes to the plan with the, you know, to the community. I don't want to see us do that again this year. Um, I think those three bullets that are on the executive summary um. Page four, the more clarity on the plan, more details on the tax impact. And alternatives to compare to. Nothing in those three bullets surprised me over what we've heard in previous years. I would like to see us. Determine what we're putting on the ballot for next spring. Now, so that we have the one way. Now, so that we have the runway to. Offer the plan, to communicate the details on tax impact, to give those alternatives, and perhaps if there's. An opportunity to leverage our relationship with Qualtrics to then engage with the community on, you know, this is. This is what the Amherst School Board intends to place on the ballot. What are your questions? What do you need to know? What don't you like about this? Those kind of type of surveys, that's something I would be interested in. Leveraging our relationship with with Qualtrics, I'm not necessarily interested in. Doing another survey to decide what we need to do. I think the plan that that was put forward last year. Um, it it meets the needs of of our learners, it meets the needs of our students. Um, and so I would like to see us move forward with that again and use this runway. To really engage with the community to understand. What their. Questions and and thoughts and challenges are um ahead, because we still have lots of time between, you know, we. Voted on this tonight, we still have lots of time between now and January, when the first public hearing would need to happen um. To to say. To answer all these questions.
So so my thoughts on this, and I agree with you, Shannon, because there are certain people that were never going to convert, there are people that just. Will do not want to pay for a new school, they don't want their taxes, go totally get that and appreciate that. Whether they no longer have kids in the district or they never have kids and they've never had kids in the district. So there are certain people that we're not gonna win, no matter, we could have every kid in the area has one hundred uh percent proficiency. Uh, every grade level where every kid is a hundred percent proficient, where eight dollars less than Hollisburg line cost per people, we're just not going to do that. Because there are people that don't want taxes to go up, totally get that, I don't mind you go up either, so. Where there are certain groups that we're not going to win over, I think with the results of this survey, we can prep better communications pieces. Because I really feel like we've been shotgun approach a little bit for communicating things over the last couple of years. Uh, this for last year in particular, it was a timing thing. And I don't know that you gain much traction in September, October, November, but having pieces in place for that two and a half month run from January first to March. Middle of March, having, hey, this is how four times impacted. This is the costing, these are the alternatives we've looked at. I think having those pieces that people can consume, whether they do it or not, I don't know, but. We've not had that really well put together consistently from one year to the next. I think that's the biggest thing for us to be able to to present that. Uh, along with, hey, these are the metrics we're tracking so that we can really monitor this, and this is the improvement we've seen for one year to. From year twenty three to twenty four already, if they're part, so I think using this time to create those. I hate the word narratives, but to be able to outline that communication, get it down on paper, in video, whatever it might be, it's going to be, yeah. It's going to be beneficial. Anyone else have thoughts?
I just want to say that I think the questions were. Aren't great, I don't think, I don't think about how they came back, I wouldn't learn anything, that's my impression of it, you know, questions like. Should there be brought back or likely to vote for it? We just had that in March, we just had that, I mean. We had nothing really shifted in the last three months, so. You know, those, how would, how would those things come back that would change anyone's life? They wouldn't, right, so they're, they're, I don't think it's better money, well, I think.
And what I took away from the survey, there's fifteen percent of the population who doesn't have a definitive opinion on this. You guys have known them for two years. Keep asking me to do the same things over and over again, you know, when you have a certain percentage of the population that doesn't want to support the project. Right? That's fine, you have twenty five percent of them are definitive know, they've been twenty five percent has been a definitive know. Based on the survey data that I've seen over the course of years, that hasn't really wavered. But then you have this population of the community, it's like un, they they, they don't know. And so I think the survey tells you that, you know, and uh. And so for me, I think it's depending like what do you want to know more of? You know, like, hey, do you know, you think the twenty five percent is gonna change? I don't think it's changed since you started this process as far as it's at least been twenty five percent. You know, and then part that votes know is the other forty to fifty percent, excuse me, uh. Uh fifteen to twenty five percent, that's slightly improved, so now you have fifteen percent that's kind of unknown, but in previous years it was bigger. So that number that's not definitive has gotten smaller. Right, and the number that has been more willing to support has slowly grown. Right, and now you have a percentage that wants more information on the project, is not ready to make that decision. But I think that's what I took away from, from the the results of the survey and, you know, uh. I know there there are certain questions that I looked at that, you know, at the end could have been made a little more clear, a little more clean. Um, but you know, we partnered with a really good company on on behalf of the Amherst School District, that's, you know, a global company. Um, that does this for a living, so kind of partner with them. On this and 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 so guide, guide you the information, I know it's not earth shattering, right?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, like, I'm not gonna say, I, I learned a whole lot because it kind of mirrored the same Google. Surveys that we put on previous years. Um, but I think a third party, you know, developing a survey that's. Not developed in-house by board members or or super superintendents, I think adds some. Credibility to this, and then it's a partnership that we can build off of. I think that's a question to hand by for you guys, you know, like you have that fifteen percent that. Not yet decided, you have the twenty five percent according to the survey that is, it fluctuates either way. That's the question.
Why do you trust the survey more than the March poll with eight thousand person voters, it doesn't show up? We've got five thousand people that are undecided.
So but, so in my experience and practice is you have fifty four percent, you keep going. In the world of building projects and then in talking to superintendents and and being experienced with different school boards. Yeah, the results of the survey tell you that you keep going, you keep, if you really, if the board wants this, you have enough data to say. Keep moving forward because you're not that forty fourth for the second year in a row, right? You were thirty eight ish before, right? And you made a pretty big game. And that's why, that's what the evidence tells me, I didn't need to do this survey to be able to recommend to you, that you keep going based on. Talking to contractors, talking to former superintendents, talking to school boards that have done this, which we all have. And we both lived a building project, you know, you were successful, I wasn't in two years, you know, pushing one through. But, you know, I think you have the information to say there, and then you can figure out. If the voters will support it and after year four, I think the, I think the outcome of year four for this town. Does make you. Have to figure out what you want to do if it goes or it doesn't go. But this is what I, this is my experience, and Steve, you've been doing this a lot longer than me, but that's the evidence. And and conversations I have and advice I can give this board.
Yeah, I've been connected to all three. And none of the three had the full runway to to explain and communicate with the vote. Last year was November, you report that, it was November, you report that, it was, I think it was October, when the board made the decision to put it to the warrant. That's why it's the sense of urgency for me is to give one shot of. Lots of time, lots of ability to communicate and remember, it's tyranny of the minority group, the majority of voters wanted this passed. And is, but not every election is is sixty percent or sixty seven, so. Um, and sixty percent of the people, fifty nine percent of the people want this to go back, right? It's not what the survey said, we can give them like fifty nine percent.
You know, and fourteen percent were undecided.
So I mean, I think, if you wanted more information about if the will of the people to bring it back and give it one more shot with a full cycle. Of education and communication and clarity, it's not like we've done it. Shannon.
So for me, and and I think you're right, Greg, we we. We got good feedback at the polls, right, that can can drive it, I think the survey. Uh, it helps, it's a, it's another point, um, but for me, based on. Based on the fifty four percent that we received at the polls with a very short runway. Based on the feedback from the survey, um. Based on how well we did at the polls, when you compared us to other districts around the state that had projects on the ballot. Um, I think we're one of very few that had a majority.
I agree.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we put this on the March ballot uh for twenty twenty five.
We have a second. Terry. What are, what are we putting on? What plan?
That we're re, that we're putting what we had on the ballot last year, that we're moving that forward again this year. And spending this next time communicating, engaging with the community and doing all of that. To close that six percent to get us to the super majority that's required to pass a capital project in the state.
The project itself, the building is leaving the the actual, the building itself, leaving that as is. And then just coming up with whatever the new costs are with the bonds rates and stuff.
So this passage would have no improvements to the plan at all, with building grounds would have any work to do, there'd be no improvements at all with the. Project, it would just be a repeat of the same thing that failed last time?
That was a scaled down project that went from forty three percent to fifty four percent.
I understand, like, what if we pass it now?
Is there?
June, is there room for improvement? If this passes then? There isn't, right? I mean, your, your, your motion is raised as you're repeating the same thing that failed last vote.
So, yeah, my motion would be to return the scaled down elementary school project to the ballot. Now, I don't want to buy, I mean.
Would you all come with a change that say? Put a building project on in March at this point? Or you want the same?
No, the implication was leaving it, and I understand what you're saying, and that's why I'm pausing. Because I don't want to be so boxed in that if there's a tweak to be made to the existing plan that. You know, gives us more structural time, right? I don't want to box us in in that way. But I say, but I think if you say a plan, I mean, what does that mean? Does that mean? We're trying to go back and redraw, it's like, we don't. Funds approved to do that, you know, like I, like, what do you mean a plan?
Yeah, something that you can approve, something you can approve.
I mean, I, I mean, is it on a new side? Is it, like, for me, it's, 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 it's on the existing side, it's. Like, we can.
Just, I just want to be clear with your motions, your motions to have no change to the plan. The fail, right?
Minimal change.
I would think like minor changes, but it's, for me, it's still a, a one to five school on the existing local site. But.
So I would like us to be precise in our language.
Yeah, me too, and I.
It did not fail, it failed to reach a super majority, it reached a majority, it did not reach a super majority. So when you say that it was rejected and failed, I think that it is. Language matters.
Yeah, but but in the end, it's the bottom line is that we're here having this conversation because we didn't get to the number that we needed to.
And so I do.
Whether it failed by ten percent, thirty percent.
Focus to trying to reach the super majority, to say, okay, great. This is the plan that reached a majority, and now we want to focus our efforts on reaching a super majority. I think that that is something I'm comfortable with, I think that saying we're gonna scrap it, go. Part of our problem, quite honestly, is going back to drawing board every year and then saying, well, how about this? Well, how about this, you know, and it's confusing to everyone. Instead, we're saying, we feel like we have settled through trial and error. And feedback and lots of work on the plan. And there may be slight tweaks, there's always room for slight tweaks, obviously, we're not crazy, if we find efficiencies, we'll certainly use them. But saying we're committed to this plan, we think it's the right plan, and now we're going to focus on. How do we help communicate so that we can get more people vested in this plan, rather than let go entirely back to the drawing board? I think that's what we're trying very strongly to avoid because we feel like we have. A good plan, and now it goes more towards communication and small tweaks, so I agree. I'm not saying we wouldn't change nothing ever. Because, yeah, there's a room to do a little bit of of shift, but it's not any major changes. Like, it was a major change last year to say, fine, we're not going to consolidate Clarkin, that was a major shift. We're not looking to make any major shift to that level.
So one could argue that their changes are why things are going, you know, improving, but. Shannon, I think it's kind of like what Terry had earlier with the vertical discussion, like. If you just want to communicate, there's nothing preventing you from doing that if the motion doesn't pass, right, so. I think I'd encourage you to just withdraw the motion, keep communicating, um, because it'd be nice to have.
We have to know what we're communicating, that's why the goal.
Well, if your changing, if your goal is to change anything, if your goal is to change anything, you know what you want to be communicating, right? I don't know what I'm communicating, I don't support the um plan last year, let's support something this year, so. Um, you know, I don't, it would not be great, I don't think, for the communication if we. Start up today with where we, where we are as a board. So um I would just encourage you to keep communicating as you, as you can on your own, nothing preventing you from doing it, um.
So the motion was in.
And we can't sit there and go out and introduce these. You know, pieces that we want to have to be able to communicate, we can't give the communications assistant work to do and come up with a social media strategy to. Be able to get information out there, so what changes are, like, what, how would you want to change process to go, what would that look like for you?
Um, what's the question? How would I change?
Well, what, what is a change process? What is a change review process in your mind to review this project and then recommend changes? Is it just building grounds looks at it again, because we can do that in July?
Right.
Is it, we scrap everything and start fresh with a community analysis and a building analysis, and it takes eighteen months to do that with no dollars? Like, what's, what's the process that you're in?
Okay, so, I mean, that wasn't on the agenda, great question, I'll talk about that, I'm not prepared to talk about that. Um, that we should talk about, I think, at the retreat, um.
But that retreat's not, we, we have to, we have to set up another meeting. Outside of that retreat, if that's what the board wants to do, that's fine.
We, we should absolutely have a meeting to discuss what is the rebuild. Um, or no change at all strategy for the Williams School Project, I, I think it should be. A dynamic discussion, everyone comes prepared to have, and I think it's a little, you know, not appropriate to have that. Motion right at this point, that's what I would, I would say here.
Shannon made a motion, Terry had, Terry, you second, we officially, we made them, okay. Uh, Jason, your thoughts, if you have anything?
I don't know, some of my thoughts are kind of unpopular, I don't find that. Need to get this figured out as soon as humanly possible, but we need to communicate, we need to get on the same page, and regardless of. How we feel individually about the projects. Once it passes, we all as a board are obligated to promote it. Put that out there for everybody, whether we like it or don't, that is what it is, it's part of being a board. I mean, reading some of the comments, and this is, I know this makes things more confusing, so this is very unpopular. I would like us to detail, I personally, I liked the very first project, everything was reset and everything was fixed. So I think.
Me, pre K through five.
And AMS.
And AMS. Yep.
Me too.
Because, because I think what we need to do is we need to detail, this is, this was in the comments. Right, we need to detail for the community, every capital need project that is going to come up. The roof is millions of dollars, people need to understand that. If we're keeping Clark, here's what it will cost us, fix Clark and keep Clark. Here's what it's gonna cost us if we lose. And. K through five, excuse me, one through five is coming closest to passing. We need, we do need something, and I think that's why. It's been different iterations of the board, why we've settled theirs, because that is the one that's made the most progress. But as part of our communication piece, I think we need to let people know, like. If you don't pass anything, here's what it's gonna end up. And people keep telling us, like, well, do it to the budget. We can't. A twelve million dollar roof in the budget.
It didn't work.
You're like, so it's like. And and one of the comments was, you know, focus on AMS, because I think that's more public. I think people, the public more understands, it's more. Has a direct impact that they see, right, flooding classrooms and and things like that, it's something that they see more readily and more available. Um. So I guess I'm kind of all over the place. I would feel comfortable, you know, if the board said, hey, we're just gonna go a little bit with last year, I get it, I'm on board, I'm a team player. Ideally, in my ideal world, which is potentially, I know. Ideally, in my ideal world, which is potentially, I know, unpopular and didn't get much traction.
We'll say, one thing that that original plan had was also historically low bond rates. And no, we don't have that now. And so that was one thing we were trying to take advantage of at the time. And capitalize on, and we missed that opportunity.
Yeah.
And so while I agree that that was my personal favorite plan as well, because it really gave us the absolute most bang for our buck. And and allowed us to have. We could move kids around as need to be while pieces are going on, we could have the same construction manager across both, like, I agree with you, that would have been lovely. But we also did learn from that, that even with the historical low bond rates, it was more than our community was willing to do in a single pass.
Yeah, I just think we need to articulate to the community, like. We we might be going back for bond for X, we might be going back for bond for Y, that's some of the things that have come. We don't trust this is going to be it. And from my perspective. And from my perspective, this is not going to be it, but we just need to, I think we need to. And maybe I'm, it was inside of the conversation, maybe I'm talking more communication and the. But we need to be able to say, I mean, but again, I know we have a motion on the board, so. And correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, even if we passed and made a motion today. We could make another motion in July or August.
Yeah, but the point is, is as to what our strategy is going to be, is it better for us to have another meeting to hash all this out again? Is it better for us to do this and then go forward? I don't know that doing both is beneficial. I don't know that it's beneficial to. Set the stage for what we're going to do tonight and then. Meet again in three weeks and have a meeting to lay out all these plans and all the different options, and maybe it's good for us to have that meeting to. Just get everything out there and break, you can have what your idea of a change process would look like, and we could talk about that and. And prepare it to what we've done already, and then maybe in three weeks, we're better off to say, yes, we're comfortable with this going forward as. As currently constituted with whatever updated costs there are, not that I want to add another meeting, but. I think we could do a meeting like this without administration there, we, you know, we don't, we need you guys there for that, we could just. Have our own meeting at the brick school and just, you know, close it down or whatnot, but. So I I mean, it's. I'm not opposed to that idea, but I want that to be efficient, and I want to come out and have the decision. I could, again, the whole point of doing something like this now or three weeks. Is that it gives us eight months and we're not facing a time crunch and having a limited availability to do anything in January. So whether we start August first or July first, it it matters not a ton, but we need to be starting something before school. We have to have stuff ready for when kids come back to school to be able to start sharing information, and that's seventy days away.
Yeah, no, I mean, from my perspective, if we're stuck in this, again, doing the unpopular things tonight, I mean. Why why not next week? We'll have another meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to meet, I'm happy to withdraw the motion for meeting like soon, I don't know that I can. But, um, or or, you know, or I, but I I guess I would want to know exactly what we're coming to that meeting with. Because I don't want to just sit and talk in circles, right? If we're going to talk in circles, then I want to call them up if we're going to be very specific in. What we're doing, I don't know that we can do. I mean, I, we may need other people in the room besides just five. With some, you know, sorry, guys, but, so, you know, I don't, I, I kind of thought we. We're doing that tonight. Or in May, but, you know, so I just want to have some clear objectives on on that. Yeah. Yeah.
Greg, I think that's good, Shannon, and I think. Part of like not doing tonight too is to like put it on the agenda, this is good advertisement for that next meeting to get people to come and comment on this. Um, I think it helps with the.
Like, I.
Okay. We also have the, you know, we asked, you asked earlier, I don't know if they will give Tom the. List of things that want to be changed or wants to be improved on the building process, um. I think I'm the level one that gives Tom the response on that in April.
Yeah.
I think so. And then I think Mike is going to be giving us that response that document we asked for. Has all the historical work been done on this area, the answer to the question I submitted at least, I think that was due in like August. So I was going to ask tonight about, you know, progress on that, I mean.
I sent you a pretty lengthy document with lots of links and historical data, I never got a response.
What we asked for, what we asked for, I believe, was something that could be. A single document that could be looked at by the public, right? So that what you said made it not meet that standard.
And and that's what we need to create, Greg, is that, and that's what. I don't want to spin our wheels trying to create stuff like this and then not knowing what that project is, so that's the intent of doing a vote tonight. Is to be able to start creating that stuff, so we have a one pager that says this is the impact on core time, we have a one pager that says this is the impact. Or this is the costing and the financing, these are the alternatives that, you know, that has that stuff, because we don't have that created now, we have. Years and years of historical records, it does take some, some time to go through, and we have a website, so. This is the ability and the, and by doing a vote tonight, this gives us the option of actually creating that stuff. That we haven't had before, you know, we delay this till September, then it just shrinks that window even more, and there's more of a time crunch.
We already voted to have that complete document, one document, all information in it, we voted in like April or, you know, April is May. And that still hasn't existed, no draft and updates at all on that, so. This, that does not depend, we already made that motion, the super pension required to give us that. And help communicate to the, to the public what has been done.
I think, I'm I'm pretty unclear, because we've provided you so much. Information as a board member, we were not prepared to go start a marketing campaign on something that we haven't decided that we're going to market yet. So what you were asking for was a one-page flyer to say why you should, why you shouldn't. You know, here's what we've done, but Greg, you've had. Every bit of information that's ever been compiled over the last six or seven years around this project. At your fingertips to to put, and you know, we serve at the absolute pleasure. Of you, but like, I didn't interpret that was the charge, the charge is to give you all the information in hopes that one day, you know, whoever's in charge of marketing this. Project, which I think is the board. It's not the superintendent. That I can help create that. So, you know, it's a slippery slope to say what the superintendents are hired to do. I will have no problem being more of a partner and a face of this project with you, but at the end of the day, it's the board's. Job to decide if they want to bring it to the ward, and they want to do a communication plan with the community to pass the project. We are just a tool that you use. And help with that. And at the end of the day, the decision is absolutely yours. All we can do is provide all the information, and what I've noticed is people try to poke holes in the process. And then how they get the information and how the information is formatted and when they get the information, but at the end of the day. You have to take that information and make a decision. What you want to do based on that information, and if you need more of it, we will get you more, right? You need it for, you know, you know, done in a different timeline, we can do that, but I thought we left. The last meeting was to do a survey, provide all the information, a couple of meetings ago now, to provide. Either the the information to the board and the Buildings and Grounds Committee that is newly formed. That we can start to have a conversation about. Where do you want to go with some of the work around here, and what does the board want to do with the Wilkins project? So it's not the superintendent's decision nor job to communicate this out solely. Alright.
So just to be clear, in your view, you think you met the, what we asked of you in April or May when we said, I think I said that I wanted. Single document, all these historical things done, and the other questions, I added two.
Yeah, but there's, there's no single document, it's not a single document of information.
We did do that, we did.
No, but it's, I I I'm looking through the minutes here, I don't see that, it was, the bottom line is that you're not going to have one single document, and this is not of the. The the information is there, we have the information in. The website and the historical data that that I've shared with you, Shannon, I know has shared it with us, was up with us all, we've we've all seen this. Now it's up for the board to create this stuff and then to leverage the S A U for the communication aspects of this, it's not up to them to create this stuff, so. This is where we have to make that decision tonight, to Shannon, want to call a vote, and then we go forward. I'll start grading this stuff. Somebody want to call a vote, or we want to have one more meeting to go back through this and and determine what we're going to.
If I called the vote, we we vote, right?
Correct. Alright, Jason has called the vote. So the motion on the table is to put the F Y twenty four Wilkins project on the ballot for F Y twenty five. Um, you didn't add this in your motion, but with the intent to be able to now craft our communication pieces and start to put this together, so we have. A good, a wealth of information in those bite-sized one pagers that we can start to. Put together and utilize to promote this. Is that a fair summary? Okay. All in favor, call the vote. Six and four, four? Against? Four to one. So we have our initiative, now it's up to us to start putting this stuff together, have the information, if we start to find stuff that we don't have. Then I think that's where we can utilize the administration for. Um, yeah, so I think that's, that's where we're at. Terry?
So just two things.
Yes.
I'd like to remind them whenever we've, we've have put in the formal vote. That the board has spoken, and that whatever our individual reservations were. We have agreed as board members that when we have taken a vote, that we support that vote, no matter what it is concerning. And and that's just a reminder that that's an oath that we all take as board members, right? When the board has spoken, we support the board. The second thing is that I would really like us to shift our focus to, again. There may be, there may be some small efficiencies, some small changes, I don't think this vote means, but there can be no change to the plan. So I'd like to remind us that we are still always looking for efficiencies and things that we can do. But that overall, we are taking that core project forward. And that we are shifting our focus to the communication piece that we very much are responsible for and own. And so I think that's really where we're trying to get to, is that we are just shifting our focus. To having the communications portion of it, is that my understanding?
Yes, and I think, I don't think it hurts to have building and grounds, look at this again, Shannon, I think. Having them look at it with some new eyes, there are some new people on there. Having them just look at it overall and say, hey, what's, this is what we did last year, this is what we're, we want support this year, do you have any recommendations? I think that's probably a good starting point, knowing that we're not going to. Get rid of seventy five percent of the building or anything, so I'm going to switch the scope of the project to spend five million less to just renovate what we already have, so. But I think we can utilize those relationships to still do it that doesn't impact the gist of what we're trying to put together. Jason?
Uh, just a couple of questions, maybe things rolling on this, um. Do we need to do anything in terms of state building application? Do we need to make a motion or anything to you, Amy, to get any of that?
I don't think it qualifies because we weren't consolidating. I'm missing your cycle, it's new by name, and just like.
Okay. And then, do we need to do anything about getting new cost estimates, or is there any motion you need to make? Do that? Because I'm assuming.
We refresh the price, we'll refresh based on what they have concurrent. And then, you know, by September, we'll refresh all the bonds, banks, and all the base, they do another sale in the summer. Now look at September, we'll refresh all the bonds. Uh, before we end, we do have a non-public tonight, so I'll open it up for our last public comment session of the night. Aaron, I appreciate your patience here, sorry we missed you when you came in, we were going to go to you, and then, uh, you had left prior to that point, so. If you have something, feel free to come on up.
Um, do I just bring the chair and sit right there? How your spot doing?
Ready, sir, thank you, Tom. So I was prepared to just say a few things, make a few suggestions, uh, but I just heard though. I'm planning on speaking on well tonight, but. Surprised that some of what just said, but, um, let me just, uh. Well, the very first board meeting after the last election, I approached this board. I did not focus on any past grievances, any past claims issues, any of that, I said, let's. Let's look at this clean slate, let's start rebuilding trust with the community, because there's certainly a good number of community members that I've spoken with and had. Made their voices heard at board meetings and elsewhere, including the polls, saying that there is a serious lack of trust. Um, so, I, um, there are things that can be done to rebuild that trust, for example, uh, what we've been communicating. Email, navigating an issue, I appreciate your timing consideration on that. Uh, e- engaging with the public in a meaningful way, that does certainly build trust. Um, a few, this is what I was planning coming in, and I have a few suggestions for the school district, the way it's run. Uh, the K through eight, uh, is on this grading system that is not the traditional A through F. I believe Sohegan is, so once they hit ninth grade, they move to a traditional mall, role, role, um, grading system. I've seen, I can't say anything more than students that filled the room in Sohegan, and even middle school students came to this board this year asking. Uh, to change this. Um, bottom line, uh, at least six, a fair minimum, seventh, eighth grade, we should switch over to traditional A through F grading scale. So that when kids get to the ninth grade, they aren't on the back foot saying, oh, I thought I was an A student, I thought I was getting A's, B's, turns out I'm not. And they're on the back foot right away, and then now they got some serious catching up, this is something that really doesn't need a whole lot of faith. Attention put in place next year, I asked at Fairmont, seventh, eighth grade. To give those students a heads up of what they're in for when their high school career starts. Um, roof issues, I want to, a way to build trust. Uh, being good stewards of the buildings, the facilities that we currently have. Uh, it is a shame that I walk into the, uh, middle school this winter and see roof water coming in. Just pouring in, in the cafeteria, it is a shame that when I read minutes. Um, that I see that staff is forced to on a regular basis, place barrels in hallways. To catch ceiling tiles falling down from the ceiling on a regular basis. Um, I've heard over and over a fifteen million dollar figure for a roof project, that A M S, however. I watched the meeting where you discussed this with consultants, contractors, whatever they were. Uh, and I saw a chart that showed fifteen million dollars total, however. An awful lot of that was HVAC, with insulation, and electric, electrical, all sorts of the stuff, the roof part, as far as I can tell, the roof line items. Is about one and a half to three million. I don't know the details of this, I've been told that the roof keeps being repaired, patched, and then it continues leaking in the same exact spots. I've seen another chart that shows that going back twenty, I think twenty-five years, we haven't had a warrant done. I I would almost guarantee, if you would put up a guarantee, but I would assume that if you put. A one, two, three, four million dollar, whatever it is to completely replace that roof. Whatever roofs need to be replaced, you get a full twenty, thirty-year warranty, if it's done by. Authorized applicator, even if the company goes out of business, the roofing manufacturer's covered that warranty, and that issue is solved. And we deal with that environmental issue, so I.
You are, right, three minutes, Aaron, so just, if you want. Rest of your highlights there.
My second, other suggestion, perfect timing, public comment. Um, to my understanding, years ago was five minutes.
Five minutes per person?
I believe so, yes.
Three since I've been here.
Uh, this is going back three years, and it was revealed that, hey, this is five minutes, and I believe they made the change to downshift to three minutes. All in the ear. So if you've got thirty people waiting to speak, of course, you can cut it down, unless no one here. Do do people really need to start reading like Microchip machine, reading rapid, by a rapid speed, and just try to get to it? Five minutes, I think, is a more reasonable time for people to come down, speak their piece, speak their mind. Uh, and to have a meaningful conversation with you, or at least comments. Um, I was planning on speaking on one other issue, but however, what I just heard regarding, I'm really taken aback by. Suggestion and the motion to move forward with this plan. Might I ask a question? Has Sohegan Board been taken up on that invitation to speak with them?
Yes, we've talked about this numerous times there, I'm not going to get into this tonight, if you go back to the September meeting, go back to the March meeting where I addressed the board. And look through the bullet points on every single item that I addressed with their votes, and then you can get your full reach out there, not going to talk about this again and again and again.
So yes, no, I was.
Yes, sorry.
My frustrations, have they been engaged?
It's fatigue, I apologize, yes, it's been addressed.
You you've met with them, and spoken with them, you had a meeting with the Sohegan Board.
Topic has been addressed, next question.
Been addressed.
Yes, the topic has been addressed, next question.
I'll call up with Sohegan and see what happened.
Perfect.
As far as this, um, this plan moving forward. There are a good number of factors when you talk about a project like this, you got costs, everyone knows that, it comes up over and over. However, you have disruption to learn, this project that is being proposed. Is the most disruptive project you could possibly have to a living environment. I was in a high school that had just simply an addition put on, rehab building. My senior year was a none, it was, it was a, it was a joke. Um, I listened to. Um, I listened to Jack Cameron's down the hallway, that's not even tearing down the building, shifting them to different buildings, dumping kids in the portables. Having all this stuff go on for multiple years, and that project, much. Less intense project, ran behind schedule. I had like three classes in the final half of my senior year, very disruptive. Opportunity costs. I've talked, spoken with citizens. Only one gentleman springs to mind that raises family here in town. He served his country in the armed forces, and some of you have. Um, and what he explained to me is, hey, taxes always go up, and if they keep going up as they have been. Ten years from now, I probably won't be able to afford to stay in here, however, this type of project goes through, I won't be able to afford it next year. So, early in the year, it was said that by this board member here, oh, we just need to educate the public, exactly how do you educate someone? Say. Come up with money that you don't have, and you will not have, you will ever have, to pay for this plan. Opportunity costs, teacher contracts, future teacher contracts, if you have. This substantial increase, which is a substantial tax increase, future teacher contracts are put in jeopardy, there's only so much. Water to squeeze out of that rock. Um, I, I've talked to citizens that say, this is not my, this is their worst. One individual I spoke with said, I will not, never trust the Emerson Board again for enough things that I don't believe. You did with passports, there was, they brought up things that I'm not overly familiar with. Pre-K, there were decisions made to just put pre-K in. And not fill the building, that put more kids in the building, there was a previous school board member that said he was against that, and he looked at that as. Quote, empire building, and yet boards did it anyways. Uh, full, full-day kindergarten, these are all things you can look at, someone on Buildings and Grounds. That just suggested looking at other land. If you're moving forward right now, essentially, you're wasting them. I don't understand this, I really don't think issues have addressed, I really don't think you're looking at the whole picture. I did, I, I didn't even expect it, I'm kind of flying shooting from the hip here, but I will wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you.
But, bottom line, this is not the way. To build trust, I, I don't believe. You are truly listening, people, um, and one last thing, can I ask a question about the, um. With, I wasn't even planning on doing all that, this stuff. Speaking about all that, but, um, on the Buildings and Grounds, there's something that was greatly concerning me that happened last time. I believe you were the chair of Buildings and Grounds previously, do those, does that committee allow public comment?
There's not public comment on the agenda.
Will they speak, will they allow public comment, because I've seen Ways and Means and other committees, always, you know, people have gone spoken, spoken line.
We, we never had anyone show up, so, can't, I don't know, I'm not chair, but.
Yeah, because I intended to speak at the last one, it was shut down, is that something that?
But we can certainly find.
But we can ask, we're on, we're. I just don't want to go down for no reason, because I would, I was going to address it here, because the last Buildings and Grounds canceled, postponed. I was going to address it here, short on time already, I've already run over, but, um. That was very concerning when I saw it happen here, what I saw happen at the last Buildings and Grounds. I as a citizen should have confidence in every minute that I take the time to read. That they truly do represent what actually happened in a meeting and are accurate, and I won't say anything further than that for right now, thank you. Well, thank you.
Alright, with that, I'll take a motion to go into. Uh, Steve, anybody online, correct?
Yes, sir, there's, uh, there's people online, but no one with their hands up, sir.
Take a motion to go to non-public.
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion from Shannon.
Second.
Second, a roll call vote.
You miss?
Yes, Lynn, yes?
Call your yes, but yeah. Why yes? Okay, we're in non-public at eight forty.